And electronic methods are available for.
No, sir, there isn't.
Very good. Okay, we will adjourn into closed session and we will return back out and report out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nineteen and twenty-three.
I'm sorry, sir.
I have nineteen and twenty for the housing authority.
Yes, sir. Do we have any public comments on the housing authority consent calendar, Madam City Clerk?
No, we do not.
Okay. Do we have any public that's waiting outside or anything? See none, move on to item number twenty. Housing Authority Consent Calendar. It's an annual report. It's Affordable Housing Agreement with Ninth Patriot LLC and the minutes. Does anybody want to pull any items, or do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Voice vote's fine, okay. All in favor, waiving full read of resolutions for all the agencies?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Without objection, so ordered.
Do we have any public comments on the housing authority consent calendar, Madam City Clerk?
No, we do not.
Okay. Do we have any public that's waiting outside or anything? See none, move on to item number twenty. Housing Authority Consent Calendar. It's an annual report. It's Affordable Housing Agreement with Ninth Patriot LLC and the minutes. Does anybody want to pull any items, or do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Did you get those?
I did.
Okay. Roll call vote, please, on the item.
Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Loa?
Yes.
Commissioner Bencourt?
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga-Sanz?
Yes.
Excellent. So with that, we will adjourn the housing authority meeting, and we will jump back to... We're going to go back to item number twelve. So we'd like to thank and excuse the housing authority members.
I just want to wish you guys all happy holidays. See you next year.
You too.
Thank you. No sense making you sit through all this. Thank you. Item twelve point one, I believe this is going to be the city clerk's office.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, before you, we have an item to adopt Resolution Number CC 2020-021. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020. It declares the result and such matters as provided by law. Attached as Exhibit A are the results of the election, and this item is just an administrative cleanup to finalize and certify the results. Staff recommends that we adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020. Declaring the result and such matters as provided by law. If you have any questions?
Anybody? Okay, just for clarification, I think you might have said 2020-021, it's 2020-121?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any public comments submitted on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, no public comments? So...
Okay.
Chair Hoffbar?
Here.
Vice Chair Loa?
Here.
Commissioner Ben Court?
Here.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Here.
Commissioner Bishop?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And Commissioner Fraga Sanz?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so for both agencies, I will ask for a waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances.
So vote.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All, do we need to do a roll call vote on that? Voice votes, fine, okay. All in favor, waiving full read of resolutions for all the agencies?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Without objection, so ordered.
Do you want to, item 19 and 20 for the?
I'm sorry, sir?
I have 19 and 20 for the Housing Authority?
Yes, sir. Do we have any public comments on the Housing Authority consent calendar, Madam City Clerk?
No, we do not.
Okay. Do we have any public that's waiting outside or anything? Okay, see you none. Move on item number 20. Housing Authority Consent Calendar. It's an annual report. It's Affordable Housing Agreement with Ninth Patriot LLC and the Minutes. Does anybody want to pull any items, or do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Did you get those?
I did.
Okay. Roll call vote, please, on the item.
Chair Hoffbar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Loa?
Yes.
Commissioner Ben Court?
Yes.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fraga Sanz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. So with that, we will adjourn the Housing Authority meeting, and we will jump back to, we're going to go back to item number 12. So we'd like to thank and excuse the Housing Authority members.
Just want to wish you guys all a happy holidays. See you next year.
You too.
Thank you. Yep. No sense making you sit through all this. Thank you. Yeah, item 12.1, I believe this is going to be the city clerk's office.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, before you, we have an item to adopt resolution number CC 2020-021. It's a resolution of the city council of the City of Palmdale reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020. It declares the result and such matters as provided by law. Attached as Exhibit A are the results of the election, and this item is just an administrative cleanup to finalize and certify the results. Staff recommends that we adopt the resolution, a resolution of the city council of the City of Palmdale, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020, declaring the result and such matters as provided by law. If you have any questions?
Anybody? Okay, just for clarification, I think you might have said 2020-021. It's 2020-121?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, do we have any public comments submitted on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, no public comments. So do I have a motion on item 12.1? Motion to adopt that, please?
So wait, I'll make a motion, but I want to congratulate the three of you for having gone through the election process, putting your families through what an election can do, and congratulations to each and every one of you. Your job well done.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion by Mr. Loa, and do I have a second?
One second then.
Okay, got a couple of seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbar?
Aye.
Mayor Paul Tim Loa?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ben Court? Sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we have administration of oath of office. We have the judge here. Richard, why don't you go ahead and go first, so we don't hold the judge up? Good, thank you very much for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. Loa, please raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Richard Loa.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
Against all enemies
Against all enemies
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
That I take this obligation
That I take this obligation
Freely, without any mental reservation
Freely, without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Upon which I am about to enter
Upon which I am about to enter
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor. Thank you. And thank you for the brevity of each of the phrases.
You're welcome.
You can tell a lawyer wrote that, can't you?
Thank you so much. I'm very honored to have the judge come here. We were colleagues as defense attorneys at the courthouse for many years. We worked together, and we continue to work together after that.
Absolutely.
Now him as the role of judge, and he sometimes as the role of defense attorney.
Richard speaks very highly of you. That's what I was supposed to say, right, Richard?
That's very nice. That's very nice.
That is what you're supposed to say, and it's very well preserved. That is to say, the kind words that I had for the judge. Thanks, sir. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I have to sign a piece of paper. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Bishop, why don't you go?
All right.
Thank you for giving me the honor of doing this for you tonight.
Thank you for your honor.
So you raise your right hand? Aye.
Aye.
Austin Bishop?
Austin Bishop.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
Against all enemies
Against all enemies
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Upon which I am about to enter
About which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. So exciting.
It is.
Yeah. Do I get to take one?
Yes.
And we'll do over.
And I'm also honored to be doing this for you, mayor.
I appreciate you doing it. Thank you.
Can you raise your hand? Aye.
I, Steve Hoffbar.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
That I will support and defend the Constitution
That I will support and defend the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
Against all enemies
Against all enemies
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith
And allegiance
And allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Thanks. Thanks. It's a sad day that we can't have our families here to witness this. I had my mom witness me earlier, so Hi, Mom. And we'll move on. Thank the council. Item number 14, presentation. Ms. Ritchie?
Thank you, mayor. I have the privilege of presenting tonight's Warrior Award to our Parks and Rec Department, which put on the Healing and Honor Field. We've had a long history of hosting community events and other, and another can be added to our list of successful and memorable ones. Palmdale's Healing and Honor Field was more than a tribute to military, law enforcement, fire, EMT, or medical personnel. The field was an uplifting experience so many Valley residents needed, and a representation of how much Palmdale cares. Sponsors, volunteers, and the city staff all had a hand in creating this event, but without the experience and dedication of many Parks and Recreation employees, the event would not have sparkled so brightly. The Parks and Recreation team persevered many challenges, extreme weather changes, managing the variables of an 11-day, 24-hour event, fielding countless questions from volunteers, attendees, and flag purchasers, charting and tracking each and every flag, meticulously laying out the field in a perfectly distanced rows, and handling each of the 2,020 flags with heartfelt care. We want to recognize all of the hard work and effort staff put into this event. Thank you for your dedication, commitment, and most of all, heart. JJ passes on his sincere gratitude to everyone for their outstanding effort toward organizing such a heartfelt regional event, and he is sad to not be here. And we have our Director of Parks and Recreation on Zoom to accept the award.
Thank you, Marie. And if you don't mind, I'd like to go ahead and play the video that really depicts all of the hard work that went into this event.
Palmdale's inaugural Healing and Honor Field took many months of planning and many hours to create, an effort coordinated by city staff and the Healing and Honor Field Committee. There were also many individual and group volunteers filling 11 days' worth of 24-hour shifts at the field. And every flag will have a yellow ribbon that you can dedicate to a first responder, a medical provider, a veteran, person in the military. I hope people come out here and they're able to heal. This has been a traumatic year for many people.
The pandemic has hit us hard here because we can't do all of the events that we normally do. So I think this is a very important culmination of bringing people together.
This patriotic display truly was a gift to and from the community, made possible through the efforts of many, including the Palmdale Auto Mall Association, this year's presenting sponsor. All proceeds from the flag sales will be donated to the American Legion, the VFW, Point Man AV, Vets for Veterans, and Coffee for Vets. All five of these organizations have members making a positive impact across the Antelope Valley every day.
Those men and women of our armed forces have answered the call to serve our nation. These men and women come from every walk of life, from every part of the United States, from every ethnic background, to be part of something bigger.
The field was also meant to be a place of healing for all who visited or passed by. This year's COVID-19 pandemic has brought our world, our country, and our community tremendous loss. Moving peacefully through the field provided a time to reflect on the meaning of the display while honoring those represented.
Those flags are going to be yonder on that gorgeous green field, and there's going to be 2,020 of them for this very difficult year, 2020. I hope the Healing and Honor Field is going to be one more little mosaic piece of that help and support.
These flags represent real people and real heroes who have made a difference in all of our lives.
But I was able to honor my grandfather, who served in World War II and was actually a Pearl Harbor survivor. He was on the USS California when Pearl Harbor was bombed, and he survived. And so to put the pieces together between being involved as a city employee and also being able to honor my grandfather in the Healing and Honor Field was just amazing, and really was a proud moment in our family.
Thank you again to everyone for making this event such a huge success, and we look forward to seeing the Field of Flags return in the near future.
I was honored to do a walk amongst heroes. Every day, this fifth flag was here, this field. And some days were tougher than the others. I walked this field, and I thought about all the heroes represented, some alive, some not alive, that you, our residents of this incredible valley, decide to honor. I hope everyone gets the opportunity to go to their flag, or go to any flag, and just say a prayer, embrace it, turn it in. This is an unbelievable opportunity to honor you and close with the honoring of our veterans. So thank you very much, and God bless America.
So these are the employees that were really key to executing this event. We have members of our Special Events Division, members of our Playhouse, and our Sports Division, and they really came together and paid attention to every absolute detail. They really persevered a variety of challenges that were in our way, and really, this is a labor of love for them. Executing events is sometimes hard work, but the reward is the final effect and being able to create memorable moments for our community at a time when we really needed it. So on behalf of all of these employees, we have with us tonight Linda, who would like to maybe say a few words for us tonight. Linda?
Hello. Hi, Carrie. Thank you. The event was a lot of work. There's no mistaking that. We've already discussed that a couple of times, but it was an actual honest, goodness, pleasure, and honor. That field was so amazing looking, and it was so, we're all so proud of it to be part of it. There was more than 30 people involved from Parks and Rec and the Playhouse staff and many others. And so just on behalf of everybody, Jeremy Group is here with me, and we just want to say thank you for giving us that award. It's all in a day of work around here. It's what we do. We do events, and it was one to be proud of, really, to be sure.
Well, excellent. Well, all I got to say is I don't know how you timed that jet flyover right when the Air Force song was going, but that was impeccable. That was impeccable. So, well, that was absolutely.
It was intentional, and both of us that are sitting right here actually had to do with that. That was a lot of fun. I was really happy when that was over with. We were like doing the, you know, nailed it.
It worked.
We were, that looked amazing, though. Even after all that work, it was so cool to see that happen.
Well, that was really amazing, and Carrie, you're going to have your work cut out for you because, you know, we're going to have another Warrior Award next month, so you're going to have to work that helmet around to all those guys.
We're up for the challenge, mayor. Thank you.
There you go. Yeah, and we'll make sure that, we'll make sure that they get that Warrior coin, huh?
They've already been delivered.
Outstanding.
I wanted to thank everyone who took part in that, and JJ especially, for putting that event together as well, because that really did offer a lot of healing and a much-needed time for our community. So thank you once again for the staff and all the volunteers, everyone. Thank you again. Thank you.
This is a total number of people who saw that, not just the ones that drive by locally, but on the 14 freeway, including many people that are just driving to Palmdale. And it was such an impressive array of flags that demonstrated the pride of Palmdale. It was just a beautiful thing. Congratulations.
I know we made some of the news stations down below, too.
Thank you, Carrie, Linda, all the people that participated, a lot of volunteers. Thank you all for putting such an event that was very, very successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to item 14.2. We have a picture here. It's another double dip here, Max and Leo, huh?
So let's see.
Oh, look at that. How do you not love a face like those, huh? How do you not love a face like those, huh? All right, so my German Shepherd fans out there, take a close look at this. Max and Leo came into the Animal Care Center as strays on December 4th. They have been very friendly with staff and tolerant of other dogs, but they are better with calm dogs. Aren't we all? It is hopeful that they would be adopted together, but they can be separated. Leo is available for option to homes with middle school children or older. Max is recommended to be an adult-only home. If interested in either or both of these boys, please send an email to the Palmdale Animal Care Center to schedule an appointment. All adoption fees for dogs and cats have been waived through December, thanks to Subaru and the ASPCA. I'm really glad the ASPCA is helping us out up here. Goodie bags for adopters of Council Cute Critters are available through the Neighborhood Services Department. So not only can you get a fine-looking animal or two, you will also get a goodie bag from Neighborhood Services. So I tell you, and I'll tell you too, if you got these two guys that have been together, sometimes it's a lot better if you can to try to keep them together, because I can tell you, these guys grow on each other, so. Carrie, was there anything else? Or is Carrie German on the line?
No, she isn't.
No, okay. So Carrie German is over there, is our expert on that, but on the goodie bag aspect of things. But anyways, there you go. Max and... Was it Max and Leo? Up for your consideration. Okay, moving on, I have item number 15, Public Comments on the Consent Calendar Items and Non-Agenda Items. I know my email was blowing up. And city attorney, didn't we have a bunch of them that were basically cutting pace on them? And maybe we could just consolidate that? Could you?
It looks like we had multiple that used same or similar language, supporting the same item, that being item number 16.4, in support of the proposed language. And there were, it looks like the majority of them. So from the emails, I'm gonna count for the record. It looks like there's 12, unless that was... Unless there was one stuck together, all in support of item 16.4. And there was another item received as to item 23.1. And that one is short and separate. I can read that when we get to that item, because it's a public hearing.
Okay, basically, these were all encouraging our adoption in support of item 16.4. I know I got a lot more than that. I'm sure some of you got some others as well. Because I know I got a lot more than 12. I tried to forward them, but they were just coming in when I was just back in my office before the meeting started, so I don't know.
They're still coming in, man.
What's that?
They're still coming in as we're...
Yeah.
Running through the calculating. Additional emails are coming in as we are running the meeting, too.
And you know, I think that the issue that's being raised here doesn't just affect the restaurants that have most directly been impacted by this county decree, but it's the employees, it's the suppliers, the food suppliers. The fact that so many of these restaurants ended up having to either donate food that came into them or let it spoil. It seems like the county was just not thinking about these little folks, and some of the bigger concerns as well. And I've met with some of the people that have been directly impacted. The pain is palpable. It is so heartrending to see the impact that this is having on people who struggle during normal times, much less during this pandemic. And this comes down, it is burdensome, as has been indicated by a Superior Court Judge in response to an order by the county that was challenged in court. There is no scientific or medical basis factually to support the order of the county. And the court has ordered that that is unconstitutional, that is to say, the order. So these folks are reflecting that sentiment writ in terms of the people most directly impacted, the restaurant owners, their employees, their families, their clients, their customers, and their suppliers, and all the people that depend on the suppliers. So I thank all these people for having commented on this issue.
I take it we're pulling that item for comment. Are the council members, Mr. Bishop, do you have something to say on this item?
Uh, no, I'm good at this moment.
Did the item get pulled?
So we just did.
Okay. Well, I do have something to say. First, I want to say that I do support all the restaurants, all the small businesses. And everybody practically has been affected by this pandemic. But I have a little bit of a conflict with the way the resolution is being proposed. I believe that I have supported the small businesses, including restaurants, through council policy and direction to staff to make some of the care money available to them. And I believe there were at least two rounds of those monies through applications. There was an application process, not only for small businesses, but the Jump Start. I mean, we've done quite a few things to help the small businesses and the entire community as a whole, the Jump Start gift cards for those that purchase a car in the city of Palmdale. We also made it a streamlined process for the outdoor dining at the time that that was allowed. I do feel the pain, because we all are going through this pandemic and we all are being affected one way or another. I personally have been affected. My mom was infected with COVID just after Thanksgiving. My daughter came positive too just after Thanksgiving. My mom is 68 years old. She's going through it. She's one of those in the population where COVID can be devastating to that age of residents. I feel the pain personally. My mom, my daughter are going through it. Even though I agree with what's being said with the court, there is no scientific data that shows that restaurants or outdoor dining are a way that people get infected. But it is a reality. We all know at least one or have heard of people that have even passed away from that virus. It's affecting everybody. But I don't feel comfortable doing a bottom-up confidence on somebody that is trying to protect us. Everybody, not just the residents of Palmdale, or not delineating small business owners, or nobody. I feel the pain again, but I find it conflicting personally to vote in a no-confidence on somebody that is trying to protect us. There is scientific data that this is real. Riverside County is zero capacity in our hospitals. LA County is what, at 86% now? So there is scientific data that this is a daily virus. Many say that November 4th is... will disappear. It hasn't gone away. It has actually increased. So I am not going to vote yes on this, because I do value those that are trying to protect us through scientific methods.
You know what?
I know that there are... There is data that shows that this can be spread just by gathering. Even our families, we cannot have more than two families together in an event. But again, I value those that want to protect our health. I know it's tough on businesses and it's tough on everybody. Some businesses have flourished because of this. Deliveries have flourished, because now we can have that contact. There are businesses that have been successful. There is jobs out there for this type of businesses, for deliveries, for all kinds of different things that have actually flourished because of this. I feel your pain, small restaurant owners, small business owners, employees. But I do value those that want to protect us. In fact, I believe that we sent a letter asking for our city employees to be the first ones to receive that vaccine which arrived in LAX Sunday night. We're asking that the city of Palmdale employees be the first ones to receive that vaccine. What message would I be sending if I'm asking for our city employees to be protected?
Two different topics.
And then, no vote of confidence. There may be two different subjects, but it's all good.
Mayor, pardon the interruption, but I would suggest that you move forward with the consent calendar, pull the item for discussion afterwards and have a super bill.
I thought it wasn't pulled.
Yeah, that's what I just said. I thought we pulled it when Mr. pulled it.
We gotta go through the first consent calendar.
Well, if there's... You know, could I make a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
You have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar minus 16.4.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So order. Get back on 16.4. You know what? Pretty much most of what you said I agree with. But the thing is, is that it's like the issue of the vaccines is totally different than the issue of how this has been managed for the last eight months. How the state came down with a totally separate set of rulings about a totally separate set of circumstances which has to do with the hospital is again totally different than what's been happening for the last eight months. Let me tell you what I had... When the press asked me about this issue, I said, "The resolution expresses our support for small businesses, particularly our restaurants, who've been adversely impacted by often arbitrary orders that have closed their operations on short notice and caused severe financial and irreparable harm." This has been going on for over eight months now, and we've just not seen any rationale or scientific justification for closing them. How do you arbitrarily pick certain sectors of the economy to remain open and just close others? Occupant loads have not been justified. Matter of fact, they don't even know what the occupant loads are in many of these businesses. They've sat there and told some of these places, "Oh, you can only have 34 people in the building." That's hardly a multiplier of what the approved occupant load of it is. So this is just seat of the pants, so. Ventilation was supposed to be the big key, but we've repeatedly asked them, "Okay, so what's the ventilation factor we need?" Uh, they don't know. So how can you say this is the solution, but I don't know what the solution is? People are losing their livelihoods, their life savings, and their retirements over this. They can't, all of a sudden, you can't take a guy with a restaurant and swivel and go into a delivery business for Amazon. And at the same time, this is a huge problem as well. We had restaurant after restaurant after restaurant that was telling us that they'd been shut down. And when they tried to pull a cart out front and do it like a street vendor, they were shut down, but the street vendor directly across the street was allowed to operate because of some direction they've gotten from up above. So that's the problem, is the rhetoric and the dichotomy that keeps occurring with these health rules. They're not justifying them. So we get contradictory information every time we ask. The recent uptick, and this is admitted, nobody's debating this, but the recent uptick in COVID-19 cases is something we all take very seriously. But as Mr. Loa had mentioned, as the court ruled, the evidence was not there for the county to force these closures. Again, this is the county's closures that occurred up until the state mandate came down the other day. And they cannot... And we cannot allow them to hide behind a state's hospital capacity mitigation to justify prior mismanagement of this issue. So that's really what it comes down to. So there's two or three different issues right here. It's how they've handled this thing the last eight months and their constant contradictions. The state comes in, that's again totally separate issue, because it's based on a totally different set of circumstances here, has to do with bed capacity. And so I think that that, and the vaccines is, you know, that's... Everybody knew that was coming. Timing's everything, so. That's really where... That's really what the issues are.
I wanted to comment.
You had a valid point, but I think that we need to put context.
First of all, I think I agree with you, Cosmo Carrillo, that this is a serious and deadly pandemic. There's no denying that. I don't think any rational person could deny that. But on the basis of scientific and medical evidence, the studies show that restaurants, particularly outside dining, the tracing goes back to maybe about 1.5%. The greatest majority of the incidence of COVID tracing go to in-family, gatherings, other social gatherings, any kind of gathering of that nature. But restaurants are far down in terms of percentage. And so it seems like the county either didn't know that evidence or completely disregarded it. Had it impacted people who are our residents, their residents in our city, and it has seriously impacted the people in our city. And so I believe that asking for a no-confidence vote on the director because of the inability to see in connection with the small percentage of people who actually contract COVID because they went to a restaurant and dined out. These restaurants are following their protocols. They're keeping the separation of the tables. They take other measures to make sure that they're keeping with all the guidelines. They invested a tremendous amount of money, because the county said, "You can go ahead and open up outside dining." They invested money.
Five to $10,000 on the average from these guys to put up tents and get heaters. Some of them were able to use it for two days.
And, you know, and at great expense, because I mean, at this time, many of these restaurants are not paying their rents. So that's going to have a repercussion on the landlords, which in turn is going to have a repercussion on lenders and other people who depend on the payment of rents, including the payment of taxes. So my sense is that there has been a complete mismanagement. I agree that the county is trying to do what it can to save us, but we have to be a little bit more surgical in terms of the impacts that it has on certain folks.
So why don't we ask them then to include or study that scientific data?
Oh, we've been doing that, and I'm on a call every week, sometimes two of these a week.
Is that mentioned on the document that we're asking to be adopted?
What's that?
To have them include that scientific data.
You know what? After eight months, how many times you gotta ask without getting the answer? I mean, you know, I don't know how many of those calls you've been on, but again, I'm on sometimes two or more times a week between the county, the state, the US Congress of Mayors, and some of these other ones. I think Richard hit a key point here, though. And it was something that only had... I had only briefly thought about, but, you know, when you start taking occupancies that have people that have to be trained, that have to take a class, you have to get a certification, you have to use certain cleaning materials, you have to do certain cleaning protocols, you have to test your employees, all these kind of things that are going down, but then you shove it underground. That's why you end up at 158 people at a party in Palmdale, and that's why you have these breakouts of COVID in these family units with, you know, repeated peak, because the family is getting together in an environment with other family members, and there aren't sanitary protocols going on. Nobody's been trained in that circle of people. Nobody's got the proper cleaning materials. And as a result, you're getting contamination, cross-contamination, and all that kind of stuff, so. I mean, and the county is not considering that. When they've got huge lunch tents set up literally across the parking lot from an existing restaurant and not allowing that restaurant to participate and, you know, potentially be going out of business here, there's no consideration on the county's side. And many of us have tried to bring this up. I've been on numerous phone calls with other mayors from around the area. I'm trying to get some surveys done through the league, the league divisions, and through contract cities. And, you know, the vast majority of cities are just beyond frustrated with, you know, the moving target, the goalposts. you know, the moving target, the goalposts. Are circumstances changing? Yes. But these are supposed to be the experts. They should, they, they should be able to predict this stuff. They're using literally data that's weeks old and then applying it and saying, "Well, in, in two days, you're gonna throw away everything that you bought for Thanksgiving."
Well, they predicted we're gonna be at this capacity, and they got it right.
Yeah, that's a separate issue, though.
But the restaurants aren't the source of the increase. Scientifically, medically, through the tracing that, that has been conducted widely, probably more, there's been more testing and more tracing in this country than any other society on earth. And yet, the evidence from those studies shows that restaurants outside dining contributes a minute amount of the spread of COVID.
The county council even said, "We're not even sure we can get that number."
So, so what changes?
So, it's okay to get a minimum number of cases from outdoor dining than other businesses.
Well, what, what, what Richard's saying here is, is that the problem is, is that when you blame one sector without looking at the bigger picture, which is what they've done, and they repeat ever since the very beginning of this, they left Walmart open, you've got hairstylists open inside Walmart. How can I, how, and when this thing went down, we were all asking the question, "How can I go into Walmart? Because it's open, and I can buy a T-shirt, but the T-shirt guy by Home Depot has to go."
It's the small businesses that are suffering. Like I said, it's the small businesses.
Let me, let me, let me.
No, I under, we all understand there's a lot of suffering going on right now. But so if this resolution passes tonight, what changes for our city? What is this vote?
First of all, it sends a, it sends a message to the small businesses that we understand what's going on, that we're supporting them, that we don't believe that the county health director has been managing the entire, there's bits and pieces of it that she's doing a wonderful job on. But overall, this thing has just been, it's been like banging around in the dark.
We understand that. So, will that help our, will that, will that strengthen or, or weaken our relationship with the county with this vote?
Supervisor, quite frankly, the supervisor is, has been very supportive of our, of our efforts here, of the discussions we're having with the other cities. We've been meeting with Santa Clarita and Lancaster on what our options might be. And many of the other cities in the North County are looking, looking at what we're doing right now to try to get the county's attention. It gets their attention is what it does. Gets their attention that-
I, I wanna make sure that what we're doing is moving in a forward direction and also trying to strengthen that relationship, because we all talk about having that better relationship with the county, which we know is vital. And that's, that's my concern is that we're not weakening it by-
She's a staff member. She's a, she's a PhD in administration. She's a, she's a, a very well-educated bureaucrat. She's not a medical doctor. And that's been part of the complaint for many of the cities that I've been speaking to, is we've got, we've got a bureaucrat that is framing the solutions based on secondary information and, and has the ability to do this and blame somebody else.
Yeah, but it was a board action through that recommendation from the Los Angeles County Public Health Director. It was a board decision to adopt that.
It was not unanimous. It was not unanimous either.
Yeah, it was a majority. So, if we, if, if I say that, yeah, I wanna support this, a vote of no confidence, what is that saying to the board of supervisors who acted on their best knowledge of the situation?
They're dealing with it politically.
The three members of the board of supervisors on the fair, two voted against it, one of them being our supervisor, Catherine Barker, and the other one being Supervisor Han, Janice Han. They voted no, and some of the language that they used was language that was also used in the lawsuit, words including arbitrary and capricious, and not based on scientific or medical evidence. Our supervisor took issue with this.
So, I think it actually strengthens that relationship with the county, because that's the one we have to go to, is quite frankly, the other four supervisors could care less what we're saying on a routine basis.
Well, Supervisor Han at least.
We have to deal with, we have to deal with our supervisor, and that's the one that is going to then make the, make, make the deals and not make the deals with one or two others down there.
And we're not the, we're not the only city that is doing this. There's other cities that have expressed the, the very same concerns and have adopted similar language.
We, we, we didn't invent the language. We, we got it from other cities.
So, that's my main concern is that whatever vote we take tonight gets us closer to some real solutions with the county. And that people understand that this vote isn't us starting a health department, because that's not what it is.
That's, that's, that's a separate issue, but I, I think that, as the mayor has said, I believe that first of all, it sends a statement from the City of Palmdale in unis, in unity with other cities in the county of Los Angeles, that the actions that have been so unilateral in terms of targeting a specific type of business, which has really done everything possible to comply with all of the rules and have invested a great amount of money and have had impacts on all of their families and so on. I think it strengthens us in the sense that we're sending a message that, you know, the county needs to act more responsibly when it comes to the impact on the residents of our individual cities, notwithstanding the fact that we're part of the contract city family. I think it strengthens us, and I, and I would ask that we support this.
Can I turn this permit?
Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
I, I just wanna say that, I just wanna make sure that the people that have sent the numerous letters to us understand that if we pass this, that it does not mean that we get to make a unilateral decision to open our restaurants or open the businesses that have been closed. This is just us putting a, you know, confidence vote into the county and, and hopes to have them or force them to do more scientific research. It doesn't give us the, the legal right to open businesses that have closed. So, I don't want the people that have sent these letters thinking that if we pass it tonight, that they get to open their restaurants and that type of thing tomorrow.
Right. I think, I think we've kinda had that conversation, some of us as well. So, yeah.
Yes, I don't really think the public should know that.
That's a good point.
And while, while Barbara Piera is a PhD and she is the director, she's not unilaterally making this decision, just like any head of an organization. She has an entire staff of people working for her. And so, she's kind of the face of that organization. So, maybe the people that's working below her, or maybe the scientists and researchers and the epidemiologists need to really sit down and have a, a conversation about how they're making their judgments and, and why they're doing what they're doing, because it is affecting many, many people, especially here in the Alamo Valley. And again, we did reach out to them in the past to send out letters saying, "Please exclude us from your, your multivariate data down there because it's completely different than what's happening up here in the Alamo Valley." So, I just wanna say that, you know, I've been really torn on this. I, I've, I've gone back and forth and back and forth on which way I was gonna vote on this. But how, how do you enforce someone to start using scientific data? And I know that they're panicking down there because of what's happening, but while they're doing their thing down there, it's devastating our business and our community up here. So, my, my main thing that I wanna say is that the businesses that are suffering right now, even if this passes, I just want them to be aware that tomorrow, we can't just make, you know, a unilateral decision to open businesses and put things back to the way that they were. So, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Duh. I think also that something we have to remember is, part of the reason we're here is because this was mismanaged up to this point. So, there's a certain amount of this that falls squarely on their shoulders, because if they would have dealt with this better, if they would have provided, I, I mean, they, their, their mandates created, I, I, I'm trying to think of the term that they were using, like a, a fatigue in the community, and they just got to the point where people were, it was just, they were saying, "Wait a second. How does this make any sense?" And that's what happens when you, when you overstep and you can't rationalize it to people, and that's why you have this problem. So, that's why I've gotten this, this pushback.
Do you remember when, I think the first letter came out on March twenty-seventh, I'm looking at it right here on my desk. And it was supposed to be just a two-week, you know, stay-at-home order, so we can get things to settle down. And it went from two weeks, two months, two weeks, I mean, two months, it just went on and on and on. And like you said, people are getting fatigued, and, and that's why you're seeing these large house parties, and people are tired, being homebound and trapped, and they can't go to funerals, they can't go to birthdays, they can't visit their elderly relatives. This is unprecedented, what's happening to our community nationwide, not just here. So, I agree with you. I think this has created a tremendous amount of fatigue and frustration, and now with the economic impact, it's, it's unbearable. I could give you some statistics on, on what's happening with the mental health crisis that's happening in Southern California and in our community, but that's for another topic for another day.
And like I say, a good portion of this, good portion of this falls back on their lap. The reason where we are is because it was, it was, you know, they're just, they're banging around, this, you know, close this, close that, close the other thing. And as a result, here we are, because they weren't, they weren't managing this correctly. So...
One, one thing that really solidified my sense that we should pass this resolution was a meeting with restaurant owners, two meetings. And you should see, really, when you see the, the frustration, the anguish, the pain, the even, the willingness to disobey that court order and open despite the fact that they're facing shutdown, because I believe the county, the state, and alcohol, for example, alcoholic beverage control have warned that if this order is disobeyed, they will shut down these restaurants. And they will shut, they'll take their, their alcohol license away.
Some of these guys said, "So what? What have I got to lose?"
Some of them are willing to take that chance, and we, we obviously have urged that, that they not take these steps and allow the court process to go forward and to allow this state order to, to end, and perhaps they can open on, on December twenty-eighth. But the pain that, that I saw, it reached me. It really touched me. And, and I think that this resolution certainly strengthens our relationship with our residents and our constituents. And I think that also strengthens the hand in dealing with the county of Los Angeles, in particular, the health department. So, I hope that the council sees fit to pass this resolution.
It's not just the restaurants either. Again, it's, it's a lot of small businesses that were, just seem to be arbitrarily singled out. It's a supply chain to those businesses as well. This is not just, well, you know, Joe's Eatery can't open. It's the, it's everything from the guy that supplies the mops to the guy that supplies the food. I mean, we had the sanitation board meeting today, and we're juggling around trying to figure out, you know, what, what's going on with, with, with sanitary sewer fees and things of that nature, because these guys, they're just, they're, they, they can't, they can't even pay that stuff. So, anyways, so with that, I think we beat this to death. Is there a motion on item sixteen?
Yeah, I move adoption of sixteen point four.
Okay, I have a motion to approve sixteen point four. Do I have a second? I'll go ahead and second that item. And the city clerk, can we call for the vote, please?
Mayor Hopfauer?
Aye.
Mayor Paul Chan Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
I, with the exception of voter not on, in the Los Angeles County Public Health Department, I vote yes on small, support of small businesses and restaurants in the City of Palmdale.
That's not the motion, huh?
I know, but I just wanna make to the record-
You had to push a button.
Okay, can I introduce a substitute motion?
But it's too late on that.
The substitute motion is, as is, by striking out, a vote of no confidence in Los Angeles County Public Health Department.
We already have three votes on the main motion, which is-
Well, there is a motion, as there's a substitute motion. If there's no sec, then the motion, substitute motion dies.
Listen, I think your timing would have been great three votes ago.
Okay.
So, but that, that, you know, we missed that. So, I'll give you a second to think about that. So, it's, so we have myself-
We have a second to the substitute?
And, and then who, who hasn't voted yet other than Mr. Carrillo?
Mr. Bishop.
Mr. Bishop.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes, but I understand where Mr. Carrillo's-
Well, I do too.
-coming from. I, you know, I understand that this is real, that this has been difficult for everybody. People who have been sick, businesses, people have been laid off, everybody. And I, I just don't want this to send the wrong, the wrong message to the county. And I don't want them to, I want them to work with us as best as possible, because that's what we've been preaching over the last few months, is that we want that better relationship with the county.
I get it.
And, and I think that's what Mr. Carrillo is talking about. And that's, that's why he said, "I'm gonna vote yes, so we can move this thing forward."
Okay, and so-
So, I'm voting no then.
Okay. All right. So, the item carries for yes, one no. Okay, so that takes care of the consent calendar. And we did seventeen, eighteen. I get what you're talking about, but it was, timing was, timing was off on that, though. So, okay, so we're at twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay, so twenty-three point one. Public hearing of view of Resolution twenty twenty zero ninety-six, staff reference, Ms. Saxton.
Okay, I, I have to recuse myself on this item. I believe this is the one right. Mr. Beck?
Yes, in view to state for the record what the conflict may be, just briefly.
I, I have a property that is on Palmdale Boulevard that is within the boundaries of this specific plan, proposed ordinance change.
Thank you, Mayor Proctor.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Megan Taggart with the Planning Division. I'll be presenting this item this evening. I will start with reading the titles of the resolution and the ordinance into the record. It is for Resolution Number CC twenty twenty dash zero-nine-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving General Plan Amendment twenty dash zero zero two, a request to repeal the Palmdale Transit Village specific plan in accordance with California Government Code Section six five four five three, and amend the land use designation within the specific plan twenty dash zero zero one area from various designations to SP Palmdale Transit Area for the area generally bound by Technology Drive, tenth place east, East Avenue Q nine, and State Route fourteen. And Ordinance Number fifteen fifty-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving Zone Change twenty dash zero zero two, a request to amend the zoning designation within the specific plan twenty dash zero zero one area from various designations to SP dash Palmdale Transit Area. Specific Plan Amendment twenty dash zero zero one, a request to amend the Palmdale Trade and Commerce Center specific plan to remove the portion of the plan bound by Technology Drive to the north, Division Street to the east, Palmdale Boulevard to the south, and State Route fourteen to the west. And Specific Plan twenty dash zero zero one for adoption of the Palmdale Transit Area specific plan. So, the proposed project involves creation of a specific plan referred to as the Palmdale Transit-
Megan, can I pause? I'm, I'm just sure if you're able to hear the mayor. He was calling for a voice vote to introduce the ordinance, and then we'll open up with the staff report.
Oh, I was not. Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. I failed to push my button. It was my fault. So, do I have a, do I have a motion to, to introduce ordinance number fifteen fifty-one, please?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Okay, Laura Bettencourt and Juan Carrillo. Can we get us all, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Carrying none? It carries. And then, do we wanna do public, do we have any public testimony on this item? Okay, do we wanna do that now, Mr. City Attorney?
We do? I don't know.
Mayor, will allow her to do the staff report presentation, open the public hearing, and do a public comment at that time.
Okay, that's fine. Megan, you're on, or back on, as it says.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so, the project involves creation of a specific plan referred to as the Palmdale Transit Area specific plan, or I'll refer to it this evening as the PTAS. The plan customizes the planning process, land use and zoning regulations for future transit-oriented development. Transit-oriented development is development which involves the creation of a vibrant, walkable, pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use community which is centered around a train system. The specific plan creates the foundation for this type of development surrounding the existing Palmdale Transportation Center and the future multimodal high-speed rail station. The specific plan document is a tool which will be used by developers, property owners, city staff, and decision-makers, and it provides policies, a vision for form-based development, design standards, and then suggested infrastructure improvements and economic development strategies, and it's intended to maximize development potential around the future station. The specific plan includes about seven hundred and forty-six acres, and it's generally bound by Technology Drive to the north. and it's generally bound by Technology Drive to the north, State Route fourteen to the west, Avenue Q nine to the south, and Tenth Place East to the east. The future arrival of the California High Speed Rail System, including a multimodal rail station near the existing Palmdale Transportation Center, will really transform the way the residents live, work, and play in this area. Um, planning for the arrival of high speed rail began more than twenty years ago and it continues in anticipation of its arrival. The city has been studying transit oriented development and has completed two planning studies in preparation for the future station, uh, the Avenue Q feasibility study and the transit oriented development land use framework plan. The feasibility study, study the Western Corridor into the future multimodal high speed rail station, and the land use framework plan created the foundation for future development within the plan area, including this specific plan. Uh, there's currently a third study underway, and that will evaluate a complete street design along the Avenue Q Corridor from Twentieth Street East to Sierra Highway. The proposed project was facilitated through a grant that was funded by the California High Speed Rail Authority, and the draft P-TASP has been created in collaboration with the California High Speed Rail Authority's stakeholders and the community. Um, given the new concepts envisioned by the specific plan, staff recognized the need to create a comprehensive outreach strategy um, to ensure that as much input was received as possible. Some of the engagement activities have included stakeholder interviews with representatives from various agencies, industries, property owners, and schools, um, like the Aerospace Academy. There have been mobile workshops, online surveys, and then public workshops were held at both Yucca Elementary School and here at City Hall. A technical working group consisting of representatives from a broad cross-section of the community was also created, and it held eight meetings over the course of the last three years. Some of the key comments received included concern for increases in property values, the avoidance of gentrification and displacement, and the need to ensure safety. The team also received input from the development community, um, who indicated that the specific plan should use form based zoning and the city processes should be streamlined. The specific plan area contains sixteen hundred parcels with a wide range of existing land use designations and zones. The predominant land use designation and zone is single family residential with multiple family developments located immediately south of the existing Palmdale Transportation Center and along Tenth Street East. The existing land use designations and zones also provide concentrations of commercial land uses along Palmdale Boulevard and Sixth Street East with industrial uses to the northeast and west of the existing Palmdale Transportation Center. The existing designations and zones also include pre-zoning designations for two unincorporated Los Angeles County areas that are within the city of Palmdale's sphere of influence. Um, this slide shows the existing zoning designations within the plan area. And in order to accommodate the specific plan, a, um, the general plan amendment proposes to revise the land use designations within the plan to SP Palmdale Transit Area. In addition, there are eighty-seven acres, um, surrounding the existing Palmdale Transportation Center, which are currently within the Palmdale Transit Village specific plan. And then the general plan amendment proposes to repeal that section of the Transit Village specific plan in accordance with California Government Code. Um, the project also includes a request to change the zone within the specific plan area to SP Palmdale Transit Area. And both the general plan amendment and zone change propose to incorporate the existing unincorporated areas into the specific plan, which are within, um, the city's sphere of influence. And the specific plan will provide designations as, um, pre-zones for these areas to accommodate future annexation of those areas into the city. The project also includes a request to amend the eastern boundary of the Palmdale Trade and Commerce Center specific plan to remove the portion of the plan that's bounded by Technology Drive, Division Street, Palmdale Boulevard, and State Route fourteen. Um, as proposed, this area will be incorporated into the P-TASP and would be governed by the regulations that are specified within this new specific plan. Uh, future development in this area would support the higher density and intensity of development that's envisioned by the specific plan to the east. The proposed specific plan outlines area specific designations, development standards, design guidelines, and methods for implementation, and provides future developers with flexibility while still ensuring a cohesive development within the specific plan area. Due to the unique character envisioned within the specific plan, creation of traditional, uh, zoning map would not achieve this desired result. So, um, because of this, a regulating plan was created to control the design and placement of new development in a manner that addresses the size and mass of buildings in relation to one another. The uses proposed by the regulating plan are outlined in the table on this slide. The specific plan creates a ringed pattern with the highest intensity of uses located closest to the core of the plan surrounding the future rail station. Um, a couple of things to note here are that the traditional neighborhood designation is intended to preserve the existing single family neighborhoods, and the regional commercial and business mix designations are located closest to State Route fourteen and are intended to support the more intense development located within the specific plan area. Um, in addition to a unique set of designations, the specific plan is an ideal site for form based code approach to regulate development. Form based code includes land development standards that replace traditional use based zoning codes by using the physical form rather than a separation of uses as the organizing principle. So, the intention of form based codes are to allow predictable development results and enhance, enhance the public realm because the physical form of future development is specifically dictated by development standards. Um, form based codes focus less on the type of activity taking place inside of a building and more on the overall form and character of neighborhoods. While use is still regulated, uh, more infinite emphasis is placed on the location and form of buildings, the character of the street frontage, and the relationship between buildings and public spaces. In general, um, some of the more notable differences between the Palmdale Municipal Code and the specific plan are reduced building setbacks, increased building heights, uh, reduced common and private open space, the inclusion of common open space requirements for non-residential development, and the reduced, uh, excuse me, reduced parking. In addition to development standards, the specific plan provides guidelines for a cohesive divine, design and compatible architecture with specific requirements for massing, articulation, and allowed colors and materials as shown, um, on these examples here. The specific plan also creates active streetscapes, um, and these accommodate multiple modes of travel and ensure a comfortable and safe environment for pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicles, and various modes of transportation. In addition to reimagining the configuration and usability of the public right of way, the specific plan also revises the street pattern. Um, and one of the more predominant examples of this is the removal of Sixth Street East to accommodate the future rail alignment. In an effort to support development in certain locations and at certain densities, the specific plan offers incentives to attract developers. Um, the plan establishes minimum densities in three zoning districts to ensure that properties, especially those that are currently vacant or underutilized, develop at desired densities, um, that leverage the presence of anticipated transit opportunities. The specific plan also proposes making public space improvements in the areas around the future multimodal high speed rail station to enhance the community, create downtown vibrancy, and attract potential development to these areas. Other incentives may include, um, reductions in parking, development fee and park fee waivers, and then assistance with lot consolidation. The economic development analysis conducted for the specific plan consists of three major components as shown here. The case studies are considered an informing document to the specific plan and provide best practices and lessons learned from other similar projects throughout the United States and internationally. And the demand projections and value capture memo contain demand projections for four key markets, which would be office, residential, retail, and hospitality, and strategies to generate potential revenue from the build out of the specific plan. Um, I did want to note that there was a letter received on this item that was placed on the dais for your consideration. Um, and that, or excuse me, we do also have some consultants on the line in case we have questions for them, um, so they might be popping in and out. And, um, you have several options for this item, which are here on the screen. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Um, staff, uh, the next item is, uh, we want to open the public hearing and call for testimony. Who's got, who's gonna? Who's got that? Anybody?
All right, I think the, we open the public hearing.
We open the public hearing, receive the staff report, and after questions of staff, then we'll receive public comment and then discussion.
We'll get it, we'll, we'll have to, we'll, but we'll have the discussion based on what the, what maybe the public has to have, right?
Right, I have one comment that's coming in from Zoom. Will participant HCB identify yourself, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Hopewell, members of the council, Hunt, Brawley, with Paul Schaffman, Kegley. I believe that Ms. Taggart indicated that, uh, you received the letter we sent earlier today on behalf of our client, Rick Sebo, um, on our property of three eight eight two zero Third Street. Um, we had previously represented Mr. Sebo in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen when he lost his industrial, uh, usage of his property because, uh, it was vacant for a period longer than, uh, allowed to be a pre-existing non-conforming use. We worked with city staff back then and we provided this information to the council and previously the staff earlier this year that allowed him to file for a CUP to continue the industrial use since the acknowledgement was that, uh, at that point in time, it did not seem likely there would be development on his property or near his property for the foreseeable future. Earlier this year, he had a buyer of his property who wanted to continue the industrial use, but they, that buyer was informed by the city that they would not process the CUP because you were going through this process of adopting a new specific plan. So our ask tonight in, in our letter is, is quite simple. Retain the provision that was in this previous specific plan that would allow Mr. Sebo, and I guess other property owners, if, if so, um, inclined, to file a CUP, uh, for consideration by the planning commission and if necessary, the council, uh, for the continuation of a industrial usage. Um, the CUP could be for six years and could be extended for no longer than twelve years. The reality for, for Mr. Sebo, who is, uh, in his seventies and his family's owned this property for years, is right now there's probably no economic usage for the property as, uh, perceived and, and outlined in your plan unless he's able to do something like this. And so that is the request. Uh, we would ask your careful consideration of that request. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening in these challenging times. And before I finish, I should say, congratulations to the three of you who were just, uh, re-elected and look forward to continuing to work with you in the years ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Were there any other, uh, written correspondence on this item?
Yes, we received one by Ben Litschzy. He is a supervising transportation planner representing the High Speed Rail Authority for the partnership that we've had with the city of Palmdale for the last five years, working on station area planning. The authority supports the Palmdale Transit Specific Area Plan and specifically the changes that Palmdale plans to make related to land use, zoning, and circulation aligned with the authority's purpose and goals. That's it for comments for the public hearing.
Anything else? City clerk? Okay. All right, so then we'll, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
To vote?
Have a motion, a second please? Uh, and a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So ordered. Okay, um, council, I, I, I have, I have one question here. What, um, I, I don't, I don't see high speed rail showing up in the next two years. They said that they had applied for this, uh, this use, um, back in twenty seventeen. That'd be twenty twenty-three for that, for the first period here. Uh, and then it could be, it would be a legal non-conforming use, right? Then that's what he's asking to be able to do? Maybe Megan can help, help, help with that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a clarification. So while, um, they did apply to amend the specific plan to, um, allow, uh, property owners to utilize that, that new rule to, um, you know, re-legalize or re-establish a non-conforming use, the applicant never took advantage of the ability to file a use permit. Um, so, so the existing location that they're referring to is still considered non-conforming, and they do not have a current, um, use permit for extending, but extending the life of that.
Oh, got it. Is there a way that, um, that there, there should be a, a way to be able to do that on a, on an interim basis uh, so that their, um, that these businesses aren't, um, uh, claiming that they've got, that, that we've done a taking or something like that? And, and again, with the complete understanding that this would be temporary, have to be renewed, and then as something starts coming down the pipe or the rail, as the case may be, that, uh, that they probably won't get renewed on their, and I, I, I gotta believe that we're gonna know something, that all of a sudden tomorrow, we're not gonna have a high speed rail showing up on our doorstep.
We, we got a plan for the future either way, and, and this really is a spectacular plan for our transit and downtown area. There's been so many hours and, and community outreach to go into this. And when you talk about setting the stage and doing a master plan area for the community, this is, this is just that.
Yeah, move this forward, but allow these businesses to continue to operate instead of just stagnating over there because we've seen plenty of delays with high speed rail, you know?
Right, and I'm sure it's.
Just hate to see property sitting vacant and becoming an eyesore, uh, when, when they could utilize it, generate jobs, and stuff like that in the interim. And then, like I said, if this thing has to be renewed every couple of years, we're gonna know that that thing's coming and we're gonna start making some changes and, and we have, have that notice, and I, it's just a thought on my part.
No, hopefully sooner than later, we have some answers, uh, about timelines and, and real definitive, uh, answers of when and, and, and how they're gonna come. But either way, we still need to plan, and, and transportation for our city is huge based on the area we're located, and it's all about moving goods and, and services and people as fast as we can in and out to Los Angeles and, and other places. And, uh, anything that could, that centers around having a better transportation center, I'm, I'm supportive of. And I think the staff has done a good job putting this together.
I, I am too. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to ask the question on this specific parcel, may apply to some others.
Yeah, it's gonna be a difficult transition.
Um, here, I did want to make one point really quickly. Um, so this, uh, particular site that the, um, the speaker was referring to is a little bit different in that it's been vacant, um, for a number of years. Um, most businesses and residents that are located within the specific plan area um, can continue to operate as they have. It's when the building becomes vacant for a certain period that they lose their ability to continue operating, and then they have to convert over to the new regulations.
The property is vacant, so there's really no, no use on the property at this time, right?
Correct.
Yeah, he was indicating that they had, they had, they have a proposal, somebody wants to buy it. I'm sure that they're looking at potentially flipping this when high speed rail shows up, but it sounds like they may have an interim use. That's, that's kind of what I'm hearing here.
When it comes to some disruption, we just have to do our best to try to plan around that.
My, my comments are really much more, um, focused on gentrification, the way that these type of developments drive residents out. The existing multifamily, when you have this type of big developments, uh, they're great, we need those type of developments. But what steps have we taken in the specific plan? But what steps have we taken in the specific plan? To make sure that those residents or business owners don't get driven out by the higher cost of living? Because you have these four units that are there, I don't know what they pay for rent, but a much higher rate would be. If a three, four, five-story, uh, mo- multifamily condominium comes in. Then those families will move out and then they'll have to pay a higher rent if they want to stay in that area, which is their neighborhood. So is, is there anything in the specific plan? Or is there any mechanisms that we can consider to not drive these people out of their neighborhood?
What he's talking about is, is a very valid question about how do we mitigate the gentrification? And then the, and the potential alienation of the people who lived in the, that live in the area then. So is there, what's the pool there?
Sure, I'm gonna defer to the consultant Roland for, for that question.
Hi, I'm Roland Gennick, Chris Parsons, I'm the project manager for the specific plan. I think, I think generally speaking, the specific plan. And the regulations that are contained in the specific plan do not require any property owner. To, to implement any changes to their, to their current. Property as it is. It just allows them to make modifications and take advantage. Of some of the incentives that are inherent to it, to develop properties more akin to. Be focused on the multimodal transportation center that will be there. So. It doesn't, it doesn't force anybody to redevelop any property from, from its current state. It just allows for more flexibility and more opportunity for those that do want to take advantage of it. But it doesn't, it doesn't. So it doesn't, it doesn't force anybody to redevelop and it doesn't acquire any property. Through the city. And really, if, if somebody chooses to continue to. Utilize the property in the state that it's currently in, it doesn't prevent that.
I think, I think, I think Mr. Creo's question is though, is as this stuff starts coming down. As these proposals are being looked at, as high-speed rail is looking like the potential for being a more and more of a reality. With, uh. What's the word for it this week? Express West or whatever, the, the connection to, connection to Vegas. You know, on again, off again, on again. And I think that really his question is. It's not a matter of forcing somebody. Sometimes the finances kind of compel that. For, for a property owner to, to make the jump and, and, and make the change to the, to the new plan. Uh, and then his question, I think is a valid one. What, what happens to the people that are there that would like to stay in that same neighborhood? Is, is there, is there a mechanism to? To, to avoid the displacement through this gentrification and through the changes in his plan?
Yeah, I think what we've, when you, when you look at the, when you look at the zoning that is applied. Within the, um, uh, specific plan, I think you will find that. Almost all of the properties that are currently zoned as single-family residential will maintain that, that zoning. So. A lot of the owner-occupied properties that you might be referring to. Are not, are not really affected for, from, through this, through this new specific plan and the opportunities that it affords. What we really tried to do is try to focus on. Allowing for that type of housing product. That, um, that we saw through our research and through our outreach to the community. To not currently be developed. So, sort of like more apartments. With, with some sort of like communal activities on the ground floor. There's sort of like younger professionals that are attracted by the healthcare and the military industry. To, to allow for developments to, to, for that housing type and product typology. To be implemented without affecting the established single-family neighborhoods that are typically owner-occupied. So it's really to, in, in, an incentive to broaden the opportunity.
Do, do we know how many of those are actually owner-occupied versus, uh? Renters? Because, you know, a, a, a lot of these neighborhoods are. The, the, the original owners and stuff have moved on. Either investors have picked up the residential or a family member is just holding it now as an investment. There's a, a kid or something that's, that's. Inherited it, you know? So, and I, I think he, I think I, I heard this in some of the, 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 um. The, the, early on, when we were over at the schools over there. And that was one of the things we heard. From, from some of the people over there. Again, it's. What, what tools are in place? I, I think this is a fabulous plan. I think it's, I think, wish we could have done this a long time ago. I think it's been a long time coming. But what is the, um, oh, the boss is on, now we're in trouble. What? What? What, what's in place there so we don't displace people that, that the economics. Have the potential for forcing out here? I know there's gotta be a solution to that, so.
Hi, Mayor, if I can, this is Carleen. So I just wanted to speak really quick to the California High Speed Rail portion. So when they come in and acquire property for their projects specifically. They're required to comply with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Program and Real Property Acquisition Policies. So. Essentially what that means is they have to offer the occupants that they displace. Equal and fair housing that they currently pay for. So, and they have to look within the vicinity that they are moving them from, displacing them from. So. That is in relation to California High Speed Rail as well as the High Desert Corridor or the Bright Line system that's gonna come in. In relation to the specific plan and developers coming in, in that front. As the properties are developed, the property owners will obviously reap the benefits of kind of the changes that happen with the property sale. And if it is an affordable unit, they will have to work with the state to help relocate the individual that is renting that property. So there is a lot of things in place through the state and through SEQA and NEPA compliance that have to take place in order to move people. In the affordable housing realm around the station.
Anybody is, uh. I don't think anybody even imagines that. If you're living in the path of the high-speed rail, that you're not gonna get taken care of somehow. It's the guy that's two blocks over that's gonna take it, you know, take it, take it between the eyes. So that's the one I think that he's talking about. I'm not, I'm not wanting to speak for you, sir, but I think that's what I was hearing.
Yes, that, that's exactly right. But also, it's those renters, it's not just the property owners.
Right.
They have the right, they're the property owners. But those that are renters there, there is quite a few multiplexes, four, four units, three units. Properties where families can barely afford to live in those units. And when these type of projects come in, it's noticeable that gentrification happens regardless. And I'm just trying to see if we can find a, a way to keep those folks in those neighborhoods because that's where families grow. They wanna. Have the memories of their kids growing in a place where, you know, they've been there for many years. One, one solution that I can think of could be maybe looking at protecting those residents that want to stay there. Maybe by inclusionary housing. And those are gonna be project-specific. Whenever a development comes in, that's when we can look at the number of units they are proposing. And maybe there is a, a policy where we can have the developer provide the housing units that they're going to be. Providing for those current residents in that particular property.
Megan, would that, would that be appropriate within the framework of this document that we're looking at today? Or maybe Carleen, is this something that we have to look at from a policy perspective? And how do we implement that as these privately funded and other projects like high-speed rail or. Or High Desert Corridor, Express West-type projects come in to, uh. To, to address that, that issue? Which, which way would be the way, I, I think we're, we're, we're looking for some guidance so we can provide some direction?
Sure. So two things. One, I'll kind of respond to the rental question or comment. Renters are treated the same in terms of relocation under the state guidance in those policies I mentioned before. So just because they're not owners of either the house or the property, they are also compensated and coordinated with throughout that process. If it is the will of the council to include some type of policy in terms of inclusionary housing. That would be something that the city staff would have to go back and work on. And look at. I would say that this is a very unique area in our city and one of the. Main drivers behind this specific plan was to create our downtown. And a great thing about it is the ring system that has been developed throughout it in terms of intensity of development. So right around the station, there's a lot more intensity and it kind of peters out from there. We've also considered the single-family homes and trying to preserve that neighborhood because we know and we heard from the public that that was very important. So a lot of consideration has already gone into the development of the specific plan to try to help. Preserve the people who want to stay and the community look and feel in the fabric of what is already going on. Just trying to enhance it and let development come in and help us create this downtown that. Really is something that we've heard from our community for so long.
Hypothetically, could we approve the plan here, but provide some direction to come back with, with addressing? Again, I, I don't think anybody in their right mind can imagine that somebody, owner or renter along the corridor itself. Is not gonna be well compensated. Again, it's the, I think that the concern is, and this is what we heard at the school, was a guy that's two blocks or four blocks away. He, he, he's not gonna get that, you know, that, that bonus treatment of, of, because of the fact that he's. In the, in the corridor for the high-speed rail, but it's gonna get displaced because. It's just more practical for somebody to do something different there than leave what's there. So could, could we approve this, but provide some, uh, direction or some requests that. Come back with some options on how we could a, address those issues? And specifically the guys that are, you know, outside, that are within the plan, but outside the actual rail right-of-way corridors that are gonna be displaced.
I just, if I may ask a clarifying question. So when you speak about somebody who's outside of the rail, who's gonna be displaced? Do you mean that they are going to be displaced simply because their property value is going to increase? Or that they are going to be impacted by California High Speed Rail or whatever rail system kinds of? Just so we can fully understand.
I think what he's saying is like the property value increases, the owner sells it, and then the people who have been running there for a long period of time would have to move. Situation like that, right?
Yeah, and I think that, and that's what we see, uh, you know, in there. And we, we've seen this, you know, I mean, I've, I've worked in a projects downtown where the, the property just became too valuable to leave it like it was. And then, you know, the four houses were there, now I've got sixty apartments on it, but those guys are, you know, have gotten bumped out. And it's not because, it wasn't because of the freeway, it was just because of economics type of a thing. So. I would just like us to, to find a way to be able to make sure that, uh, that, that the existing tenants, and maybe it could be something based on. How long they've been in the neighborhood, you know, like some guy that moves in tomorrow because he anticipates a paycheck. You know, that wouldn't be, I mean, some of these people have been there for a long, long, long time.
If, if I can chime in really quick, just.
Sure.
Just to clarify and give the council all the information. Obviously, you are all very well-versed in our RENA allocation and the numbers that we are. Being allocated by the state to me. We, as a city, are. Our extremely low allocation is actually one of the lowest allocations that we have. The area that we need or have been assigned the largest designation is the average category.
Right.
So. While we understand that development. Has an impact on our community and we want to make sure that we maintain the fabric of our community and that is very important. We also have to serve our community and provide. Various housing options to the community. And the state has already put a lot of restrictions on how we deal with housing. Developers also have the opportunity to pursue DSC bonus agreements, which. Actually, most of our housing projects that have come forward recently include that, and that has an affordable component. We are seeing that mixed proposal come forward in our planning division. I think that there are things that are in place. Under the state and how the city currently handles housing and communicating about housing to the development community that are already going on. I would just caution the council.
No, I think, I think you, I think you answered that really well. We have the pro, I said, yeah, you, we have. We have provisions and I, I, I would just like to make sure that we encourage the use of those so that we don't. Cause the, um, the displacement of people without encouraging a mechanism by which they can be accommodated. Does that make sense? I mean.
And, and I think that we can do that as developments are proposed. If a developer wants to come in by X number of parcels where there are X number of units. I think that we can come up with a mechanism to encourage the developer to offer units to those. Residents that are gonna be affected by this particular development. Not the entire specific plan. But as, as they are proposed, then we can work with the developer through policies. To encourage them to offer those units to the residents. I know there are mechanisms through housing projects, displacements. And all these things that are available to them. And some of them may want to leave. Some of them may, may find an opportunity to leave the, the neighborhood. But there are those that want to stay there because that's where they grew up.
Does that make sense, Megan? Carleen, is that, you think we can? Mr. Bishop, does that sound right?
Yeah, that sounds good. Do we need a motion to approve?
No, I, I want to circle back real quick here. So I, I just want to make sure that we're not creating. A bunch of areas of no-man lands out there with some of these businesses. I get it that we, 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 we need to make these changes and stuff. Is there, is there a way though that we can allow some interim uses on short-term? I don't know whether, perhaps by the CUP for these things to, to. So that we don't have just a bunch of property out there that's boarded up in anticipation of something that's gonna be coming when some guy can put. You know, half a dozen people to work, you know, making widgets or something there on, on the property in the meantime.
If, if I can hop in, I'm just.
Good stall, Megan, it was excellent.
So one of the things that Megan did a wonderful job, including a figure and talking about, was the form-based code that is presented as part of this specific plan. It's very exciting and it's the first and only one that we have at the city. It is very flexible in terms of what can go inside of those structures. And it's something that we, you know, included a lot of community feedback and interaction about where these land uses go throughout this specific plan. As everyone knows, development goes in bubbles. And so, or in waves, I guess that's a better way of saying it. If we allow someone to come in and preserve a old use that is not compatible with the future. Plans of this specific plan. that is not compatible with the future plans of this specific plan, it could miss a wave and be a disservice to the future down downtown of the city. The form-based code hopefully accomplishes a lot of that flexibility that council has been really asking staff to provide, so um.
I was really talking about short-term stuff, maybe, you know, like two years at a at a bite. Because the, you know, these, these, again, we're going to know this stuff is coming and we have the ability then to say, well, you know, maybe, maybe we're not gonna, uh, likelihood of this thing being renewed at the end of next year's is is like zero, you know? Because something's, something's coming down the pipe here, so.
I would think we'd have the flexibility to do something if we had some something short-term. As long as it's not permanent. If it's temporary, I would imagine we could just.
I would agree with that with existing buildings, but when you have a vacant piece of land and somebody wants to develop it.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I mean, the the price of a vacant piece of land is much less than a building on the property. So in in a sense, I I do agree with what you're saying, allowing it on a temporary basis on existing buildings where there is no improvements or expansion of the 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 building.
Yeah, the existing non-conforming use, yeah, that type of thing.
But when when you're talking about allowing uses on vacant pieces of property where.
Oh, no, I was, that wasn't what I was going, that wasn't what I was going.
That's what the ladder in front of us is asking, because it's a property vacant.
No, I think it's vacant as far as no tenant, but it's it's an existing building on there, correct? On the one that is in Scranton?
Yes, there is an existing building on it. Um, and it's as far as we know, I mean, there has been no um formal mention of any type of specific business that is proposed for this location.
High-speed rail hasn't even made it to Bakersfield yet, let alone here. And they've told us it's gonna be, uh, once it's in Bakersfield, we're talking about a number of years before it gets over to the Hatchet peas into into here. So, uh, yeah, I I would just hate to see guys sitting there with empty buildings collecting graffiti and homeless guys when they could be putting somebody to work, you know, or or making it productive. So I would just like this to, let's see what we can do to try to facilitate that within that, within that framework with the very clear caveat that this is, these are very temporary and come up for routine renewal and, uh, you know, that type of thing.
Well, I I think we've got to have confidence in our staff that that they'll be able to work through these issues. I'll make a motion to approve this.
I second the motion.
Okay, anything further? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffler?
Aye.
Councilmember Ben Court? Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, the item carries. Going to be watching.
Thank you very much.
Uh, so we're at twenty-three point two. This is public hearing and review of proposed ordinance number fifteen fifty-two for adoption. Staff reference. Yeah, he's coming.
Okay.
Fifteen fifty-two for adoption. Carlene, or we have somebody else handling this item? Oh, it looks like Bishop is here.
Hi, good evening, this is, this is Ben Fiss.
Could you?
Senior, senior planner.
Right, can you read any, read the ordinance into the record, please, sir?
Absolutely. Ordinance number fifteen fifty-two is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale amending various sections of Title seventeen of the Palmdale Municipal Code to improve the organization consistency and flow of the document and find that the project is not subject to the California Department of Labor. I'll go ahead and take a pause to allow the council to vote if you need to or take action if that's necessary.
I have some questions.
So we have, we're gonna, we need to introduce the ordinance first. Do we have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, it's introduced. Ms. Ben Court, you have a question?
Yeah, part of the change was regarding the roll-up doors, is that correct, on businesses?
Yes.
That is correct.
So we're prohibiting the the external roll-up doors? Is that what I'm reading?
That is, that is what is proposed in the ordinance amendment, yes.
As a, as a law enforcement person who teaches, you know, businesses and people to harden their target and protect themselves, and you know what we've seen in the United States with the protests and the riots and the damage to businesses? Do we still feel that's prudent to ban those external roll-up doors? For businesses to protect themselves?
The intent is to allow businesses to continue to provide a roll-up and roll-down security shutters on the inside of the glass as opposed to on the outside of the glass.
But you said, you're right, we're breaking the glass. So wouldn't it make more sense to put on the outside to protect the glass?
I believe that it's more of a broken windows issue where.
I I get that, but the world is a-changing.
The aesthetic impacts of it.
So I can, I can tell you, I've I've done a lot of projects down below with, that had concerns about the security issue. And they don't have to look like an industrial roll-up door on the outside of the building. To to Ms. Ben Court's point here that there's, there's a lot of designs out there that can be done that that don't look like a, you know, a, a, a ninety-seven-piece articulated door that's rolling up on a round thing on the header. So I think there's ways that this can be done. And, but anyways, listen, why don't we let the staff do a complete report and then we can come back and see what else they got?
Okay, sorry.
Sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Tell yours.
The purpose of the amendment is to streamline how the code is used, clarify and eliminate some ambiguity and ensure consistency in the code and in our processing of planning cases. The zoning code has not kept up with the evolving nature of land use and development. New types of businesses have entered the marketplace that were not contemplated previously or in previous updates. The land use matrix found in PMC Section seventeen seventy-six provides users with a comprehensive list of allowable uses and associated zones in which those uses are permitted, along with the appropriate entitlement. It is important to revisit this list periodically in order to add new uses and reclassify existing uses as business types evolve over time. Some uses proposed for this amendment include escape rooms, rock climbing gyms, spinning classes, and paintball courses. Corrections to the wording of various sections are necessary to reflect inconsistencies and omissions. Clarifications serve to ensure consistency and clarity for the development community and staff as well. The proposed changes in regulation are generally part of refining and modernizing the zoning code to bring it more in line with the best planning practices. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the general plan. And for these reasons, uh, the planning staff recommends approval or adoption of the ordinance of ordinance fifteen fifty-two approving ZOA twenty zero zero four, amending these various sections of Title seventeen of the municipal code. That will conclude this presentation.
Okay, do we have any, um, public comment on this item?
You'll have to take a vote to open the public hearing.
Okay, um, well, okay, have a motion to open the public hearing? A motion second in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? So ordered. Do we have any item on twenty-three point two?
We have not received any comments on this public hearing.
Have a motion to close public hearing? Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? So ordered, hearing done.
So I have a question. How does, and it may be that there is no connection between this and the item that was just.
Push your button, Richard.
Oh, I'm impressed. I have a question regarding how this dovst, dovetails or if it all intersects with the item that was just approved on the Transit Center specific plan. Is there, does this affect that or does it have any kind of intersection with it or? Because I know that there's setbacks that are being provided for it, that are being changed and things like that. I'm just wondering how those those two, uh, those two measures mesh? If they do, or if they don't, or if it's not relevant?
Carlene?
I'm sorry.
Or, or Ben?
Just to make sure that we're understanding a question. You're asking how these will relate to the specific plan that was just adopted?
That's correct. With the setbacks and some of the other zoning changes.
Different guidelines that are separate from municipal code. So these will be completely separate and would apply to properties that are outside of that specific plan area.
Okay, so it doesn't include any of the specific zones in the city?
Okay.
It doesn't include any of those within the specific plan that was just adopted.
Right, and I, in terms of the previous, I didn't vote on it. So if the record could reflect that, I recuse myself as far as the vote as well, please. All right, thank you.
So, um, back to the question on, you know, we we completely took out security roll-up and down shutters. And I think that if you have a problem, um, you end up with, it was an appearance issue, you're gonna end up with boards on the front of these until the guy can get glass. And, um, I think that, in general, I think that's correct. You don't want to have a bunch of these industrial roll-up doors on there. But I think there should, we need to have perhaps some flexibility that how can you design it and put it in there and accomplish what needs to be done? Provide the security for the building, uh, but provide the, um, so maintains a level of aesthetics so it doesn't look like, just like, like a lumberyard that's behind the door.
Could it be others through the way?
Yeah, sure.
I just want to say that, you know, from working where I work, I I can, I can, I've got the stats to show you that we get between ten and twenty reports on window van- window vandalisms where people have thrown a rock or a brick through a business window every single month. And that takes a tremendous amount of time and money from our deputies. And in a, in a climate now where they're talking about cutting law enforcement funds and budgets, allowing businesses to protect themselves so that we don't have to respond to twenty-five broken windows every month would certainly give deputies more time to do what they need to do. So I I'd like to have that reconsidered if possible. Because as as things have changed, we don't have to look at the big ugly doors, uh, uh, fifty years ago. They do have new things in place. But with what's gone on in the world, um, I I don't see that it will will end. There's always going to be people that are going to be angry. Right now, we just have people that break windows for fun. We have transients who have nothing better to do and want to just throw a brick through a window. And if the businesses could protect themselves at night with those roll-down doors, I think it would help our city overall in 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 the end. I'm just, and I can show you the numbers if you guys want to see, you know, the actual stats of how many businesses have broken windows every single week and month.
I think we all drive down the street and we see them. I think that that's a legit, Megan, uh, or, um, or, well, I'll defer to Ben and then I'll let Megan and Carlene overrule them. But is there a way that we, we can, um, approve this with the modification that language be included to allow for perhaps the, uh, a staff review for the aesthetics of it? The, the, the standard roll-up, you know, you know, is not going to be approved, obviously. But from, from staff level approval of, uh, of a, um, uh, compatible appearance and stuff like that? It sure isn't the way I want it phrased, but I'm throwing it out to you guys.
I'll go ahead and defer to Megan.
Sure.
I was actually just looking at the the wording of, um, the the language. And I feel like there's, there's a way where we can make the language a little bit more flexible. With the way it reads right now, I'm looking at your exhibit one to the ordinance. It says, "Security roll-down, um, up-down shutters mounted on the exterior of a building shall be prohibited" and then internally-mounted security shutters. I think that we could probably wordsmith that language a little bit to maybe include shutters that are mounted to like a window frame or something. I mean, really, the intent was to avoid those industrial-looking shutters on the exterior of buildings.
Agreed.
That are not real buildings.
And I I just would like to add also that, uh, we did find some anecdotal evidence that, uh, law enforcement does like the opportunity to be able to look into a building without a complete obstruction. That's why we've included the twenty-five percent of the window area to be unobstructed or or to be able to, to be able to see into the building. We also require often in our commercial approvals that the buildings have low-level security lighting on within the building at night. And again, that's for law enforcement to be able to look into the buildings. But that doesn't, that doesn't, yeah, it, it, that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to to step on you. It was just.
I understand guidelines, that twenty-five percent is is meant while the business is actively open. Places like, like Seven-Elevens where deputies can go by and see clearly into the business, make sure the clerk is not being robbed, that it's not nefarious activity going in like with our, our, our video archives and that type of thing. The twenty-five percent was never intended to be after hours. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, and I, you know, it's, um, it's nice to know, too, when you're rolling up in the fire rigs to know whether or not there's something going on inside. But probably the fire guys have got a better way to take a look inside than the, uh, than the cops do because this is going to take out a rotary saw and open that thing up. But, uh, a, um, there, there can be, uh, you know, like openings and slats or or things of that nature. I think there's a way that we can get there and still allow the stores in these, uh, buildings, especially the guys that are closed from Friday afternoon. He comes in Monday morning and he finds out that, uh, you know, he's on a, that his windows have been kicked in and maybe all of his stuff's been walked off with. Or or maybe like Ms. Ben Court said, maybe it's just, somebody was just being stupid and just broke all of his windows, you know? So, um, can we, can we approve this with the provision that we want, we want to, um, put the language in there to be able to allow it? But again, I'd be, I'd be happy with staff level approval for, uh, to look at the aesthetics on that. Anybody else have any ideas on that?
I have an idea. The, uh, if we amend the ordinance, we'll have to bring it back for another reading. So I I think it's either. Oh, it was, it's fine, I just, just for the clarity of purpose here. If we, we can adopt it or we can direct staff to bring it back with amendments. That's be your cleanest way to do it in the government.
Okay, do we, do we have a motion then? Because I know what happens when you try to rewrite it from the dais. We screw it up and then these three people end up having to work it.
Move to adopt the ordinance?
So you want to adopt it as it's written?
No.
And I, and we can request staff to bring back a report on issues that have been raised tonight.
Is that the cleaner way of doing it?
I would recommend directing staff to go back and reword it and bring it back in its full entirety for your review.
Okay.
To make sure we capture your intent. It is an ordinance that'll go into our code for implementation.
I'll move for that, then I'll move to have, uh, staff to bring it back to us.
Okay, so have a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Loa. Anything further? You'll call for the question, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Philson?
Aye.
Mayor Phil Tim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Ben Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I got, got through that one. Good, good work, though, I, I think we're on the right track. Just a little bit of massaging will do a lot better. Uh, look, I think a couple of us got to take a break and then we'll come back for twenty-three four, okay? Thank you. Oh, twenty-three three, I'm sorry. Well, whatever's. Ms. Benton Court, back into the meeting, please.
Yep, I'm here. I, I can't, there you go, there you go.
All right, moving on. We were just having a discussion about the, uh, impending curfew here, so we are going to try to get through the public hearings and, and then, uh, probably, uh, just to journey other items until the next meeting. Um, twenty-three point three, public hearing and review of proposed orders number CC twenty-twenty dash zero-one-two.
Before we, uh, before we start, I'm going to recuse myself out of the abundance of caution for having a, uh, property located within the Anaverie neighborhood.
Is that, is that required on that, if you, as a resident, to own? I don't think that applies to that, does it?
We've discussed it, but without further legal analysis, out of the abundance of caution, it's an appropriate approach.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay. Have to take that class over. All right, staff to read the title of the resolution, CC twenty-twenty-one oh two, who's handling that?
Thank you, this is Ben Fiss again.
Thanks, Ben.
This is, uh, resolution number CC two, uh, twenty-twenty dash one zero-two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, California, approving tentative tract map six-one-eight-nine-four, time extension number two. A request to subdivide four-hundred-and-sixty-one-point-four-three acres into three-hundred-and-sixty-six lots for the purpose of constructing three-hundred-and-thirty-three single-family residences, one multifamily lot, twenty-nine open space lots, including eight native lots, and three basins located at southeast corner of Avenue S and Parkwood Drive. I'll go ahead and pause for, uh, council. Uh, do you need to introduce the, uh...
Yeah, is that, is that southwest, Ben? Is that southwest corner or southeast corner?
The last line there.
Yeah, you're not on, that's why.
That would be su- southwest of Avenue S and Parkwood Drive.
Thank you.
Mayor, the, the map is on page eight-hundred of your briefing.
All right, I think, I think some of us heard east, not west, but, so, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, we'll, uh, open a public hearing and call for testimony on twenty-three point three. Did we have any public comments on that item?
This is for the reading of the ordinance, you just have to approve that by voice book.
I'm sorry?
It's to introduce the resolution first.
We should introduce the resolution.
Yes. Go ahead, Janey.
Okay, I was, I was following the script here, that, that's three lines down, okay. Uh, fine, we'll, all in favor? All right, anybody opposed? All right.
He'll do his presentation.
Use a yellow marker on here, so we, uh, so now, um...
Ben will provide a presentation to you, and then afterwards, we'll open the public hearing.
Okay, so we're going to go over these agendas here, because that's not, that's not what I'm reading, so, I'll go over that with you tomorrow. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The request is for a second and final three-year time extension for tentative tract map six-one-eight-nine-four. The proposed time extension is coming to the full City Council for consideration because the original approval included a number of lots that are less than seven thousand square feet in size, which required City Council, uh, to act initially on the project. The tract map would continue the Anaverie development along Avenue S, uh, southwest of Parkwood Drive. The City Council has the following options: to adopt a resolution CC twenty-twenty-one oh two, approving tentative tract map six-one-eight-nine-four, time extension number two, and find that the project will not result in any changes to the adopted environmental impact report, mitigated negative declaration, or mitigation monitoring or reporting program. Continue the project and direct staff to return with additional information, or deny the project. Uh, staff recommends option one. That concludes the presentation.
You, Ben, on this, on this, on this item, Ben? Were, um, was that density or those, uh, uh, number of lots in the, in a specific plan for that, for that area? From the start?
Yes, uh, the, the, the specific plan covers a much larger area. Uh, this is one of the tract maps within the specific plan.
And it's, and it, but, but the density's consistent with the specific plan of that, correct?
Correct, yes, there's, there's no new development proposed as a result of this time extension.
Okay, this is something I was talking with the city attorney the other day about, that we're, we're getting some of these public hearings because of the seven thousand square foot trigger. But that, that number came in twenty-five years ago? I mean, it was a totally different housing product that was coming in here. Um, so I, I, I'd like us just to take a look at what's the, the legitimacy of continuing to have that when, when, you know, the, the project meets the, the specifications out there, but it's just a matter of, you know, maybe we got sixty-five hundred square foot lots, or, or whatever it is here. Um, I, I think that we're, we're making, uh, we're making, uh, development community jump through additional hoops for a public hearing when they're, they're merely doing what what, what should have been consistent with the project here, so.
Yeah, and you're right, and that's exactly what just happened with this. I have an email with points I was going to send you to this effect. We almost treat it like an ordinance, when in fact, this is just a resolution.
Right.
And that's why I went through that little procedure there, because it's this, this piece that we've inserted into our code that was, I would understandably imagine was asked for by the council sometime in the past, and so that definitely needs to be cleaned up. It would take care of what we just went through there, but also the additional ministerial process here.
I think it would make it easier on the staff, on the developer, and then if, um, if there was a problem, but I, I'm, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the same environment and the same problem that we were seeing twenty-five or thirty years ago when, when, when this was first brought up, so. So that, that's, that's my only comment on there. So where, where are we doing next now? Was there any other, was there, now do we have any public comment?
Yeah, no public comments were received for this item.
All that, okay. All right, council, uh, any questions or comments? From the, from the side booth? You're good, okay?
Let's close the public hearing.
Okay, we need a motion, was that, was the motion to close the public hearing? Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So ordered. Mr. Loa makes a motion?
Seconded.
And Mr. Carrillo is the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Paul Timm Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carries, uh, four, zero, with one, recusal. Mr. Bishop recusing. Let the record reflect, Mr. Bishop is, uh, receded. Twenty-three point four, public hearing and review of proposed urgency ordinance fifteen-fifty-six for adoption. Carleen, somebody in your shop, or is this you?
Yep, this one's me, um, thank you and good evening, mayor and councilmember, so I will read the ordinance into the record and allow you to introduce it. So it is an urgency ordinance, number one-five-five-six of the City of Palmdale, amending chapter fourteen-point-zero-four of the Palmdale Municipal Code, Joshua Tree and Native Desert Vegetation Preservation, to require compliance with California Endangered Species Act, consistent with state law.
Okay, have a motion and a second, I believe? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? So ordered.
Okay.
Now, do we get the staff report now? Okay.
Yes, I'll just give a quick verbal presentation, um. First, I just, tiny bit of background, I'll be very brief. So in September, the Fishing Game Commission voted to list Joshua trees, Western Joshua trees as candidate species under CISA, California Endangered Species Act. Therefore, prior to that, and since then, um, over the past couple of months, city staff has worked with California Department of Fish and Wildlife, San Bernardino County, Yakima Valley, the Center for Biodiversity, which was petitioner to put it as a candidate species, as well as the Fishing Game Commission, to put forward a draft special order to allow the City of Palmdale to authorize the take and issue permits for the take of Western Joshua trees under specific circumstances, specifically for dead trees, single-family home additions, accessory structures, patios, pools, things of that sort, and any public works projects. These projects are able to be processed over the counter here at the city versus having our residents and our small contractors have to go through the cumbersome process of getting the application through the state. So on December tenth, the Fishing Game Commission voted unanimously to approve our special order, and, um, therefore, we are here tonight. I would like to clarify, there is a memo on the dais for the council and mayor that identifies a change in the special order as they decided during their approval on the tenth. There's additional clarification for removed trees. So they added a removed tree can, or a, sorry, I apologize, a dead tree can only be removed if it is within thirty feet of a structure. We've added that into our ordinance, as well as the special order that is attached. Um, just really quick, if I may, this has been a huge city effort, uh, Megan Taggart and Steve Montenegro, Mark Ethererton, really our public works team, has taken a huge lead on this, and we've put in a lot of work and time, so I just wanted to thank everyone and then thank the council... thank the council for your support in doing this, and we're available for any questions.
Earlier, I had a discussion on.
You on?
Subparagraph D one. Okay, I have a question regarding, and I had a discussion with Marie and also with you earlier, that a project means a single-family unit, not the entire development. Someone could come in with a proposal for a hundred single-family residences within a project or a development, but the project that's stated in D one on page eight-ten means a single-family residence. Not the whole project. So the ten Joshua trees would apply to a single-family residence only.
That is correct.
Okay, and what's interesting about this is that if someone comes in with a proposal to build a, an apartment complex, there's no limit on the number of Joshua trees that could be taken. Is that correct?
So just to further clarify, so there is no limit for any project, technically, that it just is whether or not the city staff can facilitate that permit, or if it has to go to the state. So an apartment complex that wanted to remove fifty Joshua trees, they would have to coordinate that permit through the state. If a single-family homeowner wanted to build a new home or a patio and was going to remove up to ten trees, they could receive that permit through the city.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that clarification.
On the, so how many, how many communities were able to have their local ordinances considered here?
We are one of three.
Good job.
You did an amazing job, you guys. You really did. Amazing.
Thank you.
And you did it in a very small period of time.
I'm very, very happy that we were able to accommodate this. I was on the front line of the original ordinance here, and the amount of changes that were required here were very minimal to make the state happy, which tells us that we've been doing a good job all along, and we convinced the state that we had a good program in place, and I know that the people, when we talked to them, and they, you know, they, they went back to you asking, are you serious? You have over a ninety-nine percent survival rate with the program that you've got? And so I think that says, says a lot for what we've been doing here, huh?
Thanks, Keith. You've been, you've been engaged from the beginning.
Now, I, I waited for her to tell me I needed to get involved. They let these guys handle the bulk of that work and stuff.
Definitely a good job, and you've been, you've been on this.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just a, all right, so.
So I have a question for clarification, Carlene. So our ordinance that we had in place, I don't know if we still have it, that for any proposed development, the developer had to save or relocate two trees per acre. Say there is a five-acre development, and then they would have to maintain or relocate ten trees. Does the developer now have to go through fish and wildlife, or is it still a city permit for do that, for doing that?
That's a great question. So for larger developments, they will be required to receive and to apply for an incidental take permit through the state. What is wonderful is our city has been really practicing great policies and procedures around Joshua trees. So fortunately, our development community is really not gonna see any difference in terms of our local practice, and they're actually gonna be set up better for dealing with those incidental take permits through the state, so what used to be the native desert vegetation plan and permit will now be a permit that is received through the state.
Okay, thank you.
Was there, I, I don't know if I asked this, did, did we have any, uh, public hearing comments on this?
No comments received on this item.
Oh, I tell you, boy, I've been, it's been burning my ear up for, for a couple of months. I'm surprised. So do we need to close a public hearing then? Need a motion for that?
To move.
Have a motion by Loa, second by Bishop to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. All right, any other further questions, Mr. Bishop? It's a pretty big deal, so.
No, I just wanna thank staff and your engagement on this all the way through. I know it's, uh, this has been a big one because it's gonna change the way we develop here in Palmdale, and we still have a lot of open land, and it's gonna be important that the city has a little bit more control over, uh, on how that happens, so thank you.
Ms. Bettencourt?
I just wanna say that I, I've been watching this from the beginning. You guys have done an amazing job, and I think because as Palmdaleans, we, we have an identity with our Joshua trees, so we've always tried to protect them. And because of all the work that, that we've put in in the past, it, it made us one of the three that was able to have this type of a local ordinance, so thanks for everybody, what you've done, what you've done in the past, to make this easier transition for us. And thanks for all the, the hundreds of hours that you guys put in, because I know some of these meetings were eight hours long with, with, with the folks, so thank you so much.
Thank you for all the work that you put into this, and you too much, mayor, for being a part of this process. Thank you, guys.
Good job.
And you're smiling. I see you're smiling. It's well deserved, and again, thank you for a great job.
That was so well said, too.
What I'm saying, you're, you're, you were smiling a moment ago, Carlene, and it's a well-deserved sense of pride that you demonstrated. It's, it's great work, and if it's appropriate, I'd like to move adoption of this resolution.
Okay, and Mr. Loa has the, uh, he's a motion. I'd like to second that one. I, I, I just wanna, I wanna just add to that, that all through this, we've been all working so hard on this thing, and it's, it's, uh, it, it just shows that when you have to get down into trenches here, that, and, and, and work on it, but if you've got a good, if you've got a good foundation, it's easy to move, move from there, so. I just, I didn't believe we were gonna be able to pull it off as, as hopeful as I was and as confident as I was. I still was sitting there going, man, it's a state. I don't know what's gonna happen here. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Hoffler?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
There we go.
Motion carries.
Twenty-three point five, public hearing of review of proposed resolutions number twenty-two-zero-one-sixteen, CC twenty-two-zero-one-fifteen, ordinance number fifteen forty-nine for adoption, approved preparatory and administrative agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, CDF, CDTFA, for implementation of the Palmdale Cities, City of Palmdale's local and transition, transaction use tax, authorized examination of sales, use, and transaction tax records, approved draft amendment to agreement A-six-seven-two-four, staff reference, Finance Manager Kang.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, this is Keith, Finance Manager. Because there are multiple items in this hearing, I'd like to present the summary first. So this hearing is to formalize the admin process with State of California for AV measure. So we are asking the council to approve two resolutions. The first one to enter into an agreement with California CDTFA for the administration of Palmdale's local transaction and use tax. The second resolution is to authorize CDTFA having access to our tax records. Finally, we're asking the council to adopt the updated ordinance. So there are two reasons why we're asking the council to adopt the, the modified updated ordinance. So we increased the number of advisory committee member from five to seven in an effort to enhance the transparency and public engagement. The second reason is that we also added a language that all the proceeds from tax shall be placed in the public's cities' general fund and will be available for any legal purposes. So those are important reasons why we are asking council to adopt the modified ordinance. So I'm gonna read two resolutions, and I will ask a city attorney to read ordinance. Resolution number CC twenty-two-zero-one-one-six, resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of a local transaction and use tax. Second one, resolution number CC twenty-dash, uh, twenty-two-zero-one-one-five, resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, authorizing the examination of transaction, sales, and use tax records. Chris?
All right, I'll take ordinance number fifteen forty-nine, ordinance of the City of Palmdale establishing the three-quarter cent transaction and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and on this ordinance, request a voice vote to introduce.
So any questions you may have, I'm ready to provide any answers.
Yeah, motion to introduce ordinance number fifteen forty-nine? Have a motion by Corio, second by Bishop. Can we get a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, so ordered. We have open public hearing and call for testimony?
No comments received for this item.
Okay, so we have a motion to close public hearing?
A motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Aye.
A motion, motion in a couple of seconds. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So ordered. What's that?
We're taking those all up together.
Uh, yes, yeah. So the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution twenty-two-zero-one-sixteen, twenty-two-zero-one-fifteen, ordinance fifteen forty-nine, approve the draft agreement to agreement A-six-seven-two-four. Voice vote requires a majority of total membership of the council to adopt. Does anybody have any further questions or comments, or big queries of the staff on this item?
I have a question. I need to be educated on the last phrase here. A three-quarter cent transaction and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. Is that just a legal beverage for this type of, uh, ballot measures administered by the California Department? It doesn't mean that we don't have the, the right to use the sales tax as it was approved, right? It's just administered by the state? It's just a formal language?
Yes, it is simply the administration process handled by California CDTFA. So we have all the legal rights to receive the funds collected through their system. So it makes no difference whatsoever in terms of how we actually receive the funds. It's just, they are handling administrative part of the whole process.
Okay, and then the seven-member committee, that's gonna come at a later point, I can, January, February, to see how those seven members.
February through March, it said, February, March.
Just the month before it becomes effective?
Yeah, then, then, just to follow up on that question, the, it, we begin, it goes into effect in January first, right?
The tax will start April first, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, I thought it was January.
No.
I thought we started receiving it in April then.
So we would have to provide information to the State of California by January in order to make the, make this whole thing effective April first.
So these agreements have to be approved and submitted to the state by January first. The tax will go into effect on April twenty, or April first, twenty-twenty-one, and the committee will be formed and convened prior to then, because we'll be putting together the development of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget, which the Oversight Committee will be a part of, and the revenues generated by Measure AV will be incorporated into that year's budget as well.
Then when would we, when would we begin, actually? So I thought we were, we'd start getting, funds would start coming in April, but in fact, they won't start coming until July?
Correct. We receive sales tax on a quarterly basis.
Right. Okay. All right, and I had several questions people called me today on. One of them was, how, what's the mechanism so that the retailers know what to charge? And, you know, between the, the county areas and the city area and versus, um, uh, out of the area?
So the way I understood is that California CDTFA, upon receiving the documents from us, they will actually send out notice to businesses, and, and business will actually implement changes in their system to collect additional taxes, and HDL, our, our consultant, is gonna administer and monitor the additional taxes coming in, so we know how much additional tax were generated as a result of this new measure. So we'll be able to identify how much and how it was done.
Okay, so the, 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 one of the calls I got today was a business that's located just outside the city, but does the bulk of his business, equipment sales and installations and things of this nature in the city? So is there a mechanism by which we use our business tax rolls or business license rolls to get this information out to them? Because the thing he was concerned with is, and again, I thought we started collecting in January, I'm gonna call him and tell him, you know, you, you got a couple of months, but what he was concerned about is not charging the right amount, and then the state sending him a bill and saying, no, too bad, you need to pay this up, and he never collected it from his clients. So is there a way to be make sure that these guys are charging the right stuff, or that we get the information out to them?
Keith, I'll answer it. So the sales and use tax is very unique in that it, there are certain situations when the tax will be charged. And one of those items is online sales, right? That's a big deal, because we'll collect that on, let's say, Amazon purchases, but it has to be what they call a destination tax. So if a Lancaster resident, let's say, comes to Palmdale and buys something, they would pay that tax. However, if they ordered it online and sent it to Lancaster's address, but it came from a Palmdale business, they would not pay the tax. So it's very unique in all the situations, which we can break down for you as well.
Well, I'm not so much worried about me, because no matter what, I'm gonna pay whatever I'm gonna pay. It's, it's for some of the businesses that are out there that deal with, um, in the county, in the city, in the city of Lancaster, and, and other jurisdictions, so that they have a, a clear understanding, or somewhat clearer, because, like I said, I got a couple of phone calls. I spent quite a while on the phone with one guy today. Should've just sent him to you to start with, but.
So taxes are reported and submitted to the state on a regular basis. Should there be any issues, we utilize our consultant to identify those businesses and let them know immediately so that there isn't a far retro pay behind it. We also do that on a regular basis now. For example, if we identify a business where our share of the taxes is not coming directly to the city, we call them out immediately and collect those dollars as well. So there are a lot of.
They know that we're gonna end up getting paid one way or the other. They're worried about, they've already made the sale. Their product has already been used or installed, and, you know, them having to go back and, and try to explain that they didn't collect the right amount of tax from their customer when that bill is stamped paying full. So I just wanna make sure that we're putting a mechanism in place to, to, that, that the vendors and stuff that are licensed to be doing business here are, are getting that. Maybe that can go out in the tax bill and on the business license page or something?
So we utilize the state. That's why we pay them an administration fee to help monitor this for us and make sure that the appropriate businesses are paying and they are collecting and remitting to the city.
Right, I just don't wanna see a guy all of a sudden find out that he hasn't been charging the right tax, because as I've found out in the past, now you still gotta pay him, so.
Correct.
So I just wanna make sure that we're gonna do something prospectively, not just.
All those businesses are registered with CDTFA to begin with, to even do business in the state of California. So, they are ma- made aware immediately of what the tax rates are.
Okay.
Okay, I, I, I just have a question on what you just said, and perhaps I didn't understand. On online purchases, if the resident purchasing the item is from Lancaster, they don't pay the tax for the city of, for the AV measure?
Correct, they would pay it for Measure LC.
They pay, they pay it for Measure LC, but the tax is still gonna be collected either way?
Correct.
Okay, and so it goes to either one of the two cities?
Yes.
So, if a Palmdale resident purchases something online, then the three-quarter taxes is applied to the city of Palmdale?
Correct.
That goes back to the Wayfair decision, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Right.
You know, uh, the, the uh uh, I, I voted to have this ma- this Measure AV placed on the ballot so that the voters could decide. And earlier today, uh, we certified the vote for the mayor, council members, and for this measure. This measure passed in all of the voting districts except for two. And uh, so it's uh, the voters uh were able to decide for themselves whether they wanted to impose this tax on themselves or not, and, and it was passed throughout the city. So, I, I just wanna commend the, the voters uh for having made a decision with all of the information that was presented to them, pro and con. And uh, it's, it's a difficult thing, taxation is a difficult thing. The important thing is that uh this tax gets to have local control. And uh, with all of the jurisdictions facing uh dire financial fallout from the COVID, uh, it is probable that we'll see more tax measures being imposed on the taxpayers, and uh, at least this three-quarter cent will be able to be handled and controlled locally. So, that's my comment on this.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
I've been getting a couple of calls, uh, not so much on, on the nature of your calls, Mr. Mayor, but I've, I've been asked, uh, when is this committee gonna be formed? And that was one of my original questions. Um, but you envision this com- this committee be formed, the Oversight Committee for the AV measure? Is that something that is gonna be recommended at the staff level? Uh, are we gonna be looking for direction from the mayor? How is this gonna work out, and I know that we have to have, I would hope that we have to have the committee formed before it becomes effective in April. That way, we can be transparent from the very beginning. That is something that I focused on when this was presented to us, because of past history and other uh measures. So, I just like to know how this committee is gonna be formed? Is it gonna be brought to us by recommendation from staff? Or do you have a vision of how these seven members are gonna be selected? Um, because I, I get a couple of questions, people that are already interested in being part of the committee.
Right, so I think that the um, uh, yeah, and I, I think we're all getting calls about people who wanna be on that. I think that the, I think wh- what the, the um, I think we're gonna ask the staff to, to, to gather those applications, and then if, again, like with all these other appointments, if you've got somebody that, that you know, you wanna recommend, make sure you, you make that, that clear uh on that, because the, the way the charter is set up, I've gotta make the appointment, but I can't appoint anybody without you guys approving it, so uh, you know.
Well, and that's why I like to have these conversations going, so that we know how this is gonna be formed, and we are transparent with the voters, and those are questions that everybody's getting.
Yeah.
Uh, that way, from the beginning, when we start collecting the tax, we already have the committee form.
Yep.
We're about to form it, or you know, whatever.
I think, I think it says in here that, that staff's gonna be coming back with that material for us in February.
Okay.
So, we can have that in place before April first hits.
Sounds good.
Okay, Ms. Benton Court, uh, you look like you're gonna say something?
I was just kinda wondering along the same lines as Juan, but I was wondering if we were gonna have a district representative from each district on that panel. I'm, I'm afraid of the public's response, if, if all of the panel members work for one district, what, what the public might think about that as far as transparency is, is concerned?
I don't think that would be a good idea or the intent, I think you're absolutely right, so. Bishop?
Uh, no, I think that's good, I think, you know, when we come to select the board members, as long as they're evenly distributed throughout the city, I think that's what's important. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it, just to echo what, what everyone else has said.
Bishop?
Yeah, the committee membership obviously is gonna be very important on the issue of control, district control and distribution transparency, so yeah, I think Mr. Correio's points are well taken.
Okay, any, anything else, or uh, let's see, did we close a public hearing?
Yes.
We did.
We need a motion.
So, we have a staff recommendation, we read that all in? So, uh, there's a re- uh, the recommendation is to adopt the resolutions uh twenty twenty-one sixteen and one fifteen, and the ordinance fifteen forty-nine, and approve the agreement, the draft agreement, uh, A six seven two four. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Benton Court?
I'll second.
And uh, Mr. Bishop? Roll call vote.
Mayor Hawthorne?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Correio?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the item, the resolutions and the ordinance carries. Okay, so we have twenty-three point six, is a public hearing? One, hear public comments on the A, Draft Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, the CAPER, for fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. B, obtain citizen input on community needs for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two action plan. Two, review and approve the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty CAPER. And three, authorize the city manager or his designee to make necessary changes and submit the CAPER report to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development by December twenty-eighth, in compliance with HUD regulations and COVID-nineteen waivers. I have a question, I keep seeing twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, but then I have twenty nineteen, twenty twenty CAPER, what, uh, but what? Is, is that a typo, or is that?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, that is not a typo, we are consolidating and holding two uh public hearings concurrently, one is to review the uh fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty uh CAPER, which is called the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. It's the uh performance report for everything that took place during that fiscal year. And then concurrently, we want to be able to give residents an opportunity to provide comment and um make recommendations for what they'd like to see uh home and CBD funds be used for the upcoming fiscal year, uh, year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two.
Okay, is there a um, you have a further staff report on this issue?
I would just like to point out a couple of highlights, uh, the report in your uh, in your uh agenda packet is the annual performance report, and uh we'll be submitting this to HUD uh in fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty, we had a busy year, and even with the changes that COVID brought, um, we were able to accomplish quite a few things that we set out to do. Uh, through uh saves, we were able to provide uh over five thousand five hundred individuals with emergency services, and that's not including the numbers that we started serving um after March fifteenth, when COVID hit, so those numbers um to date, I've actually, they've increased their services a hundred percent uh year to year. Uh, we provided thirty-four senior households with tenant-based rental assistance, uh keeping them housed and at an affordable rate for them. Uh, and we are looking to expand that as we move into this next fiscal year. Uh, fair housing and legal services, we have a contract through Housing Rights Center, and we provided services to two hundred and forty-one residents uh in March, they moved all of their services to an online platform, and anybody needing legal assistance or fair housing uh can go online any day of the week, uh, the, the weekdays, and get the assistance that they need. And then we're also making progress on several public infrastructure projects, including Corson Arts Colony uh and the, the park and the pool, uh Yellen Park and Q twelve. So, we're excited to report those things, staff have been working hard, we're grateful for partnerships with uh the Public Works Department, and then as COVID came on board, you'll see in the next um year, how that has increased our uh diversity of programs, uh being able to provide additional types of rentals, assistance, mortgage assistance, and a partnership with the Econ Dev Department uh to provide uh some business assistance as well, so um, we've been a busy department, and uh we are looking forward to all that's yet to come in the uh twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two action plan. We are anticipating to receive full levels of funding, we are an entitlement community. Um, so we'll receive somewhere around one point four million dollars uh for CDBG, and somewhere around four hundred thousand for uh the home funds. Uh, this meeting was noticed according to um HUD regulations, and we posted a meeting notice in the pub- in the AD Press, as well as around City Hall and the city website on uh November thirtieth. So, giving residents opportunity to come and provide comment, perhaps they'll be here tonight, so. Thank you so much, uh, staff recommends uh all the items that you so kindly spoke of, Mayor, uh to hold the public hearing for these two items. Review and approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty CAPER, and authorize city manager or designee to make changes and submit the report to HUD, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, city clerk, do we have any public comments, or, or Marie?
No, we have not received any comments for this item.
Okay, so a motion to close public hearing on it? Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? So ordered. Okay, we have a staff recommendation, approve the recommendation and findings as listed in the staff report, do I have a motion on that?
Well, wait a minute, but are we gonna comment on it?
Oh, sure, yeah, fire away, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm just wondering, uh, on table CR ten on page eight seventy-four, um, the designation, you know, in these, in this age of identity politics, um, I'm just wondering about these designations as it compares to the uh designation by the census. Uh, for example, on the first line, there's uh white, does that mean Caucasian uh including uh Hispanics and uh and non-Hispanics is in that first designation there of, of white? Cause I see, I see ten thousand five thirty-three fifty-three there, and then at the bottom, I see total Hispanic, then at that point, eight thousand seven hundred nineteen, so is that ten thousand three fifty-three plus eight thousand seven nineteen, or is that eight thousand seven nineteen included in the ten thousand three fifty-three? I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Thank you for that. Uh, HUD captures, these are HUD-required categories, so we don't get to choose how we capture uh race and ethnicity. Um, HUD allows uh beneficiaries to self-categorize uh their racial category, uh and that is the top portion of that page, you, uh, the categories include white, black, African-American, Asian, and so forth. And then, in addition to being able to categorize racially, they allow to categorize ethnically, so one can be Hispanic and white, or African-American and Hispanic. Um, so, it's, it's not that white is included, I, I should say, non-Hispanic and non-Hispanic, maybe a mix of all of the above racial categories.
Okay, so the uh, where it says total, then the designation after that is like, uh, people self-categorize under ethnic?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, and then my other area of questioning is uh on page eight seventy-eight, minority business enterprises and women business enterprises. And I see that all of the uh designations there are zero, so we had two projects that were completed during this uh period, during this fiscal year, which were the Corson Park, the Corson Arts Colony East and West, which was completed in June of twenty twenty, and the Yellen Park Sidewalks uh project, which was also completed uh June thirty, twenty twenty, so those are within the fiscal year. And, so there were no awards given to any uh minority business enterprises on either one of those two projects. Those were the only two projects that closed, right?
Uh, well, so that made, I, I don't believe that's the case, I believe there's one other project, uh, the Corson Warehouse uh for ADA. Um, I believe you're talking to page twelve of the draft CAPER, I'm not quite sure what number it is in your agenda packet.
Yes, page twelve, yes, and page eight seventy-eight of the agenda packet.
Yeah, uh, so the CAPER report requires uh specific information about the home project, and the MIBI is reported on a federal fiscal year, and so the home funds that were spent on the Corson Arts Colony were technically completed in the year prior. Uh, so in this current uh twenty nineteen through twenty twenty fiscal year, we did not have any eligible home projects to report for this particular indicator.
Okay, so there were none then, at all? No projects were completed? Okay, I was just wondering because of page.
This particular criteria of being home-funded.
Okay.
Correct.
So, I was, I was interested or concerned because of uh, the report at page five said that the um, Corson Arts Colony West was completed in June twenty twenty, but that's not part of the home of the home funding, is that, was that what you're saying?
Uh, so we're reporting some of, we reported the home units last year, um, and it was the project technically was completed in two phases. Uh, so we want to highlight that project uh also in this report, as the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year is part of the five-year consolidated plan. So, this report is the fifth and final year of the five-year plan that we submitted to HUD. And so, we definitely didn't wanna miss the opportunity to highlight the benefit of Corson Arts Colony, um, both the east and the west phase. Uh, we can do a better job at articulating that in regard to how it relates to this particular report.
Okay, so, and the same goes for Yellen, because it says it was also completed June thirty, twenty twenty, so is that a home-funded project, the Yellen sidewalk project?
Yellen would be CDBG-funded.
Okay, so that's CDBG, okay, and that, and you share that there. Alright, thank you for that clarification, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Well, I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, no, it's good, uh, you know, um, because that, it makes it look like we, we didn't do anything, but that we clarified that, in fact, we did, but just within whatever the reporting period was.
Outside of it, yes.
Exactly, okay. Mr. Bishop, you seem to be looking for something over there?
Nope, all good.
You good on that, okay?
All good, it's, you know, to go on what your comments were, funding can get complicated. Uh, your projects get started and funding sometimes just has to.
And it's when, it's when that particular fund was expended, yeah, exactly.
So, it goes through cycles, so I know it's complicated, but I understand your concern.
And then you have the reporting that you have their own requirements also, that, yeah.
Ms. Benton Court? Okay, alright.
We couldn't hear her, but.
Sorry, I'm good.
Okay.
Alright, did we um, we, we had no public comments, so is there a motion on this item?
Who to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by uh Mr. Loa, and a second by Mr. Bishop. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawthorne?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Correio?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop? Thank you.
Excellent. Is there any desire to continue the meeting any further, because we're supposed to have a ten o'clock cutoff, and we are already engaged on twenty-three-sixth, or do you wanna roll this over?
I move it continued to next Tuesday, the twenty-second.
You wanna do it next Tuesday, you wanna do it next meeting?
No, move it to the twenty-second. The next meeting is January?
Twelve.
Twelfth.
Correct. Do you, you wanna have a special meeting for twenty-four, or do you wanna deal with it right now?
Well, it's after ten, and uh.
I think we should observe the curfew.
I mean, we're under a curfew in the county, and I think that we're after ten PM already.
Alright. So.
City attorney, any, any?
First, first, so, so we're gonna cut off the meeting, and the question is, is when do we wanna deal with the uh?
Right, our municipal code gives you broad discretion if it's a vote of the council, so either the next Tuesday or the next time of day you so choose.
Whatever the majority wants.
I think the twenty seconds is, is good, if we don't do it on the twenty-second, it's just gonna add to the length of our next meeting.
That's right.
It pushes over the limit next time also, so I think the twenty-second is much more appropriate.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that, if that's a motion.
Yeah, I moved it to the twenty-second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so, and, and so the consensus is a. Okay, alright, so, and, and, so the consensus is the twenty-second, alright. I would encourage everybody, go ahead and turn in whatever reports you gotta turn in, uh, and, uh, we can, uh, reconvene on the twenty-second then.
I have one question. Um, since we've already turned in our written reports for our committing, should we revise them, because I have a prison meeting tomorrow, so at the next meeting, I could add anything I did between here and there, right?
No, I think, I, I think if, I, I think we're good with what we've got, as long as it's ultimately accounted for, you know.
Okay, okay.
Alright, meetings adjourned.